Was that a yes? Okay, all right, take two. Some Collins-Leg Board meeting to order on March 7, 2023 at 6:35 PM. Welcome everyone. Okay, we're going to start off with executive session. So we're going to enter into executive session per MGL Chapter 38, Section 21. We will return to open session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property at Five Quarterville Road using exemption six as the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call votes. So Sam?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Chelsea?
Aye.
Cook is aye.
And I need to call the trust.
Well, that's what I was going to next, okay.
Okay, sorry. Okay. And I call the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee to order at 6:36. The committee will be entering into executive session per MGL Chapter 38, Section 21, and not returning to open session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property at Five Quarterville Road, exemption six, as the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation, negotiating position of the public body.
Second.
Roll call vote. Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Malinowski?
Aye.
Mr. Stivers?
Aye.
Mr. Dennington?
Aye.
Ms. Jazinski?
Aye.
You think you have to come to the mic, Dorian? Sorry. And Mr. Boland as well.
Aye.
And Mr. Boland?
Coming up, Bill.
Oh, it's not on, Dorian. You have to turn it on, sorry.
Surely that was an exaggeration.
Can we hold it over here and please ask us something?
Aye for Jazinski.
Mr. Boland?
Mr. Boland votes aye.
And Brashow, aye. Thank you. We're in executive session.
Now we need to announce the following. Anybody that is in the Zoom room needs to leave voluntarily because if you don't, you won't be able to come back later because the way Zoom works. So please leave the Zoom room so you can come back to the public meeting.
Recording stop.
Vanessa, you ready? So we're totally ready? All right, so we're back in session, public session at 7:18 PM. So, welcome everybody. Okay, first thing on the agenda is Steve Holland. Come on up Steve. I knew everybody else, so, possible elimination. Yep. So, this is gonna be quick. Have a seat though, relax. We're not gonna grill you here.
I'm ready for it.
All right. Okay, so Steve, we usually ask people who are interested in joining committees just to give us a, you know, quick background as far as why you're interested, what's relevant, et cetera.
Sure. I've lived in the town now since 2016. I have a background in construction and was looking to join a board. Felt that I could bring some added value with a construction background into the planning committee and the capital improvements. We have a young daughter who is gonna be, you know, using the library and all that's, you know, and the other amenities that the town has to offer. So, being able to have a voice in doing that and hopefully providing value and, you know, bringing my knowledge to the table where, you know, I had spoke with Jason and, you know, not everybody had more of like an accounting background. So, I was hoping to bring, you know, my construction background and knowledge into the planning for the future here.
That's a great background. How old's your daughter?
She is gonna be 17 months.
Oh, so she'll go all the way through, so that's great. That's great. Okay, so, this is not, again, gonna be grilling. So, we just go through the board and see if they've got any questions and then we will vote. Andrew? Andrew?
Mr. Holland, I think you have a background that's really well-suited to a bunch of different committees here, and thank you for volunteering, and I look forward to supporting your appointment. You know, you're such an interesting candidate. You look at, there's a bunch of different committees where, you know, you can be valuable on, so really appreciate your stepping up and volunteering. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for volunteering, a great background for this job. Quick question, anything in your employment status that would potentially be a conflict here in terms of working for a company that might do business with the town in some way?
If there were any of that, then I would bow out of whatever responsibility.
Okay.
Currently, the jobs that I'm working at are for Sanofi and for, you know, more larger, you know, biomedical.
We'd love to have Sanofi in town, actually, but, but just a point to keep your eye on, should there be any issue there, the town clerk is a good resource in terms of those kinds of things, and the State Ethics Commission is a good resource if you have questions about it, so, great, thank you.
Great. Thank you, welcome. It's wonderful to see new people step forward to serve on the committees. I was actually, had the pleasure of being on Capitol for a couple of years. It's a great group of people. I think your background is gonna bring great value to it, and just once again, thank you. It's nice to have new people step forward and take an interest in the town and serving, so I look forward to supporting you.
Thank you.
Hi, Steve, thanks for coming tonight, and thanks for applying for this. I think you have a great background, so I look forward to your appointment.
Thank you.
This was a slot they really were trying to fill. It's a great committee, they do really good work, it has been so helpful the last few years as far as the work that we do on this board. There's a lot of projects that are on the table, so I think you'll be busy, and so I think you really will like it. And you can always do more than one committee, by the way. You don't have to just do one, so in case there's something else you've got. Okay, so I'm trying to figure out what term you have, so, yeah, I assume you don't know, right? So, when we appoint you, we make a motion for a term to end so-and-so, and it doesn't, our website right now doesn't show the vacancies as far as what the terms are.
Let's say six thirty to twenty-four.
Okay, so, we think it's six thirty, twenty-four. Okay, so, I'll make a motion to appoint Steve Holland to the CIPC for a term ending six thirty, twenty-four.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Mr. Malinowski runs a committee like no one, so I'm sure he'll be in touch with you soon, and I think he's very happy that you're going to be on this committee.
I'm happy to be on it as well.
All right, thank you.
Very much.
Please get sworn in promptly. In fact, there's the town clerk right over there. Raise your right hand.
Okay, the next one's easy. So, the Community Center Exploratory Committee, it's an ad hoc, and it just got started a little bit later than what they thought, so all we're doing in this charge here is pushing back some of the dates in here, so it's redlined. Everybody okay with what they see here?
Yep.
Okay, ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay, so, motion to approve the changes in the charge for the Community Center Exploratory Committee ad hoc that we see in front of us.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, done. Okay, now, the fun part, citizens petitions. Okay, so, there's a lot of people here tonight that are here for that. We are doing these in the order that they're on the warrant, to be fair. We're gonna give each petitioner up to five minutes to basically talk about their article, why they wanna do it, et cetera, and then select board may or may not ask questions. Okay, we are not gonna vote tonight while you're here on these articles. We voted on some of them already, we may vote on the 21st, we may wait till town meeting, it just depends on which ones we're talking about. But I do wanna make clear, 'cause this applies to everyone, each one of these, I mean, this was determined last night by town council, are advisory only, which means that you basically are asking somebody to do something, but whoever you're asking is not bound by it. Most of these are to the select board, there's one, maybe two, to the advisory committee, but they're all advisories, so I just wanna make sure that's clear as far as the nature of what we're about to hear. Okay, come on up. So the first one is being sponsored by a young man who would like to see the voting age reduced from eighteen to seventeen. So, we all know you because of all the work you've, good work you've done on the park committee, but go ahead and introduce yourself again so that everybody knows you.
Thank you. I'm James Nichols Whirley, I live on 94 Main Street. I'm officially, as of last November, a registered voter, 'cause I am now eighteen. I've been a student at Saint Mark's, and I've been lucky enough to live in Southborough my whole life. And additionally, I'd be remiss if I forgot, I've been serving on the Saint Mark's Street Park Working Group for about the past fourteen months, and we've been working very hard, and I'm sure you'll be hearing about that soon, but that was really, I think, the impetus for this petition, which would expand our municipal voting age. For most people, because of the way we time our elections, they will be voting for president or governor or senator before they get the chance to vote for school committee member, select board member, or planning board member. This petition would expand the voting age only in municipal elections, and I think this is really important for three big reasons. We can inspire lifelong citizenship. When you start voting earlier and consistently, you create a lifelong habit of voting. If you think about anything you started when you were seventeen, and think about how that has carried on with you throughout your life. Additionally, I think it would be a great thing for our community. Many people who grew up in Southborough moved away for work or school, but then moved back in with their families. By expanding the voting age, because a lot of people don't get the chance to vote before they leave for college or work, it'll create a tie, a connection, between people who grew up in Southborough and those who move back to their community. And finally, I think that voters who are aged seventeen bring independent voices and valuable perspectives that maybe we can't even imagine what new ideas can be brought from people who are just slightly younger than the voting age. Now, one thing that was pointed out to me was that maybe seventeen-year-olds would be too influenced by their parents. I think this is especially funny, 'cause it was my own father who brought this up to me, and I disagree with him, and I find that an enjoyable irony. Many people point out that maybe we shouldn't lower the voting age because we're concerned about competency, that we're concerned about how serious seventeen-year-olds would take it. For one, I know, I was seventeen, I was serving on a town committee, I know plenty of people who can bring a serious dedication to their civic life in town, and I think we should afford them that opportunity. Voting is something where we don't limit, we don't limit voting in any way except for age. We don't have literacy tests, we don't have poll taxes. A voter could walk into the voting booth on voting day and only know a campaign slogan from each candidate, and we trust them to vote, because in our democratic republic, we trust the voters to create a free and fair society to bring us towards a stronger government. I think that this would be a great thing for the town of Southborough, and said that our states and our local governments are the laboratories of democracy. There are several other places, four cities in Maryland, a city in California, other democracies like Austria, Greece, and Scotland that have expanded the vote. I think Southborough should be next. We can be the first town to do this, and I think it would be a great thing for the town. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, and before we see if there's questions, I just wanna thank you for the work on the park working group. You have been a pleasure to wash your breath of fresh air, and Mr. Fairington, too, both of you, so young, so it's been great to see two people that are so young step up and do the kind of work that you do. I do think you've got a good career ahead of you as a diplomat, for sure. Okay.
Thanks, James, nice presentation. What made you think to do this? Like, you're eighteen now, what influence do you think you would've had at seventeen, and kind of what prompted you?
I think, well, for one, I was very lucky to attend both of the town meetings that happened when I was seventeen. By permission of the moderator, I was allowed to be in the hall, and I, for one, found it fascinating. Even a lot of adults tell me that they are, you know, that they're not as impressed with town meeting as I am. I was in awe. If we look at what's going on in Congress and the national government, I think town meeting has a chance to be incredibly civil and incredibly productive, so that's one thing. And another thing I think about, I've been very politically involved my whole life, from, you know, me and my siblings protesting on the steps of the state house when we were kids for our father's marriage equality, to working on a campaign when I was sixteen and seventeen. We let seventeen-year-olds, they can make political donations, they can knock on their neighbors' doors, they can write a letter to the editor, they can participate in political life in every way except vote. I think that would've been really valuable, even if it was just putting up a red flag or now a clicker at town meeting, I think would be a great opportunity.
Great, thanks, James.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for stepping forward and doing a lot of research on this, obviously. My question was similar to Ms. Malinowski, so I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, James, very great presentation, and clearly you're an extremely accomplished young man, and if all seventeen-year-olds were out of your mold, I would vote for this in a heartbeat. I remain unconvinced at this point, but I will continue to think about it, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, James. You know, I've gotten to know you pretty well over the last year, and I thought you just made an outstanding presentation there, and I think you should make a very similar presentation at town meeting. I think people will be similarly impressed, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
However, Mr. Perry, are you here? There he is. He announced, and David, you can correct me if I'm wrong, things changed, but he announced last night at the pre-town meeting that that article is gonna be, because you can't withdraw it, it's gonna be indefinitely postponed because the owner of the property for which the zoning change is being sought has decided to enter into a contract with someone else to sell it. David, is what you said? Yes? Okay, so you still agree?
I wasn't there.
No, you go ahead.
David Perry, 22 Main Street.
Your microphone's not on, David.
Okay. It's David Perry, 22 Main Street. I apologize for the late notice of withdrawal, but I was dealing with the owner one-on-one, and then all of a sudden I got a call from him that he'd got a Realtor, and I was waiting on her to get into the buildings, and I called her sort of impatient after a week, and she said it'd already been sold, so without, I wasn't even notified, so that's it. I'm sorry. Apparently, he's gonna tear down the building, so that's what I wanted to say, but anyway. I think it is actually the last farm homestead between Worcester and Boston, literally, the last one, with the, you know, the farmhouse and the barn, so it's gonna be gone, I'm afraid. Anyway, so I'm withdrawing.
So you're gonna make the motion at town meeting to indefinitely postpone it?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, everybody okay with that one? All right, so there goes one, so forty-three now. Okay, next one is the, is Peter here? I don't see him. Okay, so we're going to skip the next two, which are the driver feedback signs on Parkerville Road North. The next one is Ms. Vaniff, Article thirty-eight, which is request for the select board to withdraw from the regional emergency agreement that we just signed a week ago.
Thank you for having me in this evening. I did pick up a copy of this, I'm sure you've each read the copy that was submitted to the state. I picked it up in Westborough. Have you seen it?
I'm not, I just don't, I can't see that far by.
Has anybody read the application that was sent into the state by Chief Purcell?
Yes.
So, it's.
That's the grant application?
Yes.
Okay.
With your signed agreement, dispatch agreement attached to it. I did read the agreement that our select people have signed, and on the, right at the beginning of it, it said it had, that you were signing because you had complete understanding of this agreement, and I just want confirmation that you do have complete understanding of the agreement that you signed.
So, when you say agreement, are you talking about the grant application or the actual IMA?
The IMA.
Okay.
That you signed. It's on the top, first paragraph, that the board of selectmen understand the agreement. I'll read it to you. I'm sorry, I keep losing my voice. It says that you understand this agreement completely. Which I was surprised that language is in there when I picked this up. Says the agreement represents the complete understanding between the participating communities with respect to the cooperative operation of a consolidated regional nine-one-one emergency communication rec. So you understand this entire agreement, all the Mass General laws. And I spent a day in Westborough, speaking to the assessor, town manager, conservation department, I picked up maps, I don't know if you know if it's in the floodplain or not, I have a map for that, I'll let you figure that out later. But my concern, in the Superfund site, there's a mention of page, which I actually had to get from the assessor over there, was page nine thirty, one seventy-seven, that was registered on eleven thirty, seventy-seven, I'll give you a copy of it. I think you should make the public aware of the site as far as where the lagoon is, where the landfill is, where the piping is, where the building is, and get a copy of the floodplain map, the new one, 'cause I think you'll find some surprises. The other thing that's not in the agreement, and I did speak with the chief of Grafton this morning, Chief Eric Matthews, it was a very cordial conversation, I told him who I was, I told him what my husband did for a living, so that he could repeat whatever I said as well. The town of Grafton is a totally tall fire department. It has one full-time chief, an administrative secretary, and a part-timer, I believe, who does inspections. I didn't know if you were aware of that in this agreement. They also have a tri-town agreement with MedStar for their ambulance service with two other towns, but I don't know what the overlap of this is gonna be. All three towns that you've entered into an agreement with all have independent employment agreements, whether they be union, Nade, or an agreement for dispatches, in the terms to 2025, some of them. The ambulance contract with Grafton, they have a dedicated ambulance service that all of their dispatching is out of the police department, so all of that will go to Westborough.
So Bonnie, with all due respect, what I think you need to do tonight.
Yes.
You can certainly have this conversation at a different time, but I think what we wanna hear from you is why you want us, you're asking.
What I'm asking, I don't think you have considered all of the other obstacles that you have omitted from telling the public, as far as the unions, as far as the independent license with an outside ambulance service in one of the community. The site itself, I don't feel comfortable with. I spent the day in Westborough, I was asked what I thought about the concept, I said I don't have a problem with the concept, I have a problem with the location.
Okay, so, site is one.
The site is number one.
Okay, next is?
The handouts of the town, the Selker provided in Grafton, they're similar, but they do not show the site. They show a site with two areas that have been mowed and where the potential building might go, but they do not.
So we get it, site, what's the next reason you want us to withdraw?
I think you need to tell the town that there's no guarantee in funding resources after the first three years, and if you have a contract with a private ambulance service, I don't know how that's gonna impact this town that's involved in it.
Okay. So what is a, what does it matter if a town's private versus municipal?
A private ambulance?
For us, what is it, we're not going private.
No, the ambulance service is a contracted service with the town of Grafton.
Understood.
If they decide to have their dispatching someplace else, the number of calls decrease. That does impact you.
But they're in an agreement with us to have dispatch go through the rec.
But they're, they dispatch for a private ambulance service. If they discontinue dispatching for that private ambulance service that's dedicated to them in one of their three stations and goes to one of the other three communities to have them dispatch, yes, it does impact you.
Well, I'm confused, help me, Tracy. I thought that, Chief Achilles, what are you asking this question? 'Cause you actually brought it up before. I thought that we're not, we think that nothing's gonna change as far as our ambulance.
joining with, that does impact the assessment.
I think it reduces it, but maybe I'm not doing the math right.
Right.
Okay, so... But the agreement that we're going in on with the other two towns is for all 911 calls to go through the REC.
That's if the agreement stands with the private ambulance service.
If the agreement stands...
But then the REC calls the private ambulance service.
Yes.
Right, to dispatch them.
You're still counting the right things.
But the agreement for the private ambulance service is with the Town of Grafton and the two other towns. If the ambulance service decides to go to one of the other two towns and do the dispatching for them, and it's not in your REC, number one. I just think...
Then Grafton finds another ambulance company.
I don't understand.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I'm having a hundred, I'm having a hard time under, so Grafton's ambulance is still going to get dispatched through the REC. So, let's say that, let's say that the, you're saying the ambulance contract is with Grafton, Oxbridge, and Upton. Is that what you're saying? For example, those three towns?
I'm just using examples.
Okay, so they're with two other towns, they have an agreement with ambulance.
Right.
So, when you call 911 in Grafton, where does it go today?
Right now?
Yeah.
It goes to Grafton.
Correct. So, that will now go to the REC.
But they could decide that another town pick up their 911 calls with any ambulance.
So...
If the ambulance decides.
The ambulance, the ambulance company that gets dispatched by Grafton's dispatcher right now...
Yes.
...decides that they want to take their own 911 calls?
Yeah.
I don't see, I don't see that's possible.
I don't think they could do that.
I don't think you can do that.
Yeah.
I think you can.
Okay, so let's, let's...
But anyway...
Okay, so we got that one.
All right, the other concern I have, since it says you have complete knowledge of this, there are two members on this board that may have complete knowledge of it. In another three weeks, you are going to be inviting two new additional people to the board who will not have that complete knowledge, and you run the risk of signing something. So, I'm just asking to withdraw.
Okay, so we'll call that changeover in Select Board?
Yes.
Okay, so I've got three things written as far as...
That should concern everybody.
Okay.
Because Chelsea's put a lot of work in it, and she's not going to be here to help manage it. Same with Lisa.
The first part of the true statement's been Chelsea's handled this all the way through, very ably and typically.
And I would really request that you put a map of the site out for viewing for the residents of the town, showing the lagoon and the landfill, and I'd like to know how old the cap is on that landfill, and the lease agreement for the building before you enter into it, because according to this document that's been signed, and if the application is accepted and somebody moves forward with anything, you're committed.
And we've asked to see the lease, at least I have, so...
No, but I'm saying before June 1st.
Right.
We agree. We agree. We want it before June 1st.
You're committed for the entire thing, but thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
But having the change on this board is more concerning than this now.
Okay, so the sponsor of Article 39 is not here. He told us last night he wouldn't be here, so we're going to skip that one. The next one is Ms. Fiore, the Public Works Planning Board.
Hi.
Hello.
This is very simple.
Introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Patricia Burns Fiore, 10 Winter Street. I think this is really very simple, very basic. We have a lot of projects going on in this town related to the Department of Public Works. We've had some issues with that department, and we need an ineffectual board that can work to help understand the priority, prioritization and spending on these projects. Currently, that board is, the majority appointing authority is with one person, which is the moderator. I feel that would be a better board if the appointing authority was relied upon boards in the town that were stakeholders in the projects that that board would be looking at. The other issue is that it would also provide a little d democratic process to appointing people and choosing people that would be on that board that is not available when one person has the majority appointing authority. That's it.
Simple.
Very simple.
Andrew.
Thanks. I know I've spoken with Ms. Fiore about it, and I don't support the article because, one, is just the immediate situation we have. What we would really like to do is hire a new DPW superintendent and then kind of figure out a path forward for what's the best way to plan for longer-term projects. I think that, I mean, when the discussion about the PWPB came back, you know, in discussion about a year ago, my first thought was it's really, the, you read what the charge for that board is, and it's very similar to what the Capital Planning Committee currently does, and we already have a very well-functioning Capital Planning Committee. So, I mean, and also another comment that I remember our former DPW superintendent making to me last year is just the challenge of having a system where if there's any important project for the vetting process, it has to go through four different boards, the Select Board, the Advisory Committee, Capital Planning Committee, and the Public Works Planning Board. It's going to go through at least three probably, but I don't think having the kind of fourth review board really improves the process. I will say, though, that the one aspect of this where I think the PWPB could serve kind of more of a productive function is, you know, thinking about long-term public works projects and helping facilitate a discussion in public forums about this, so town meeting is kind of more aware of them before they come down the road. So, those are my thoughts on that.
Do I respond to any of that? So, it's kind of impossible to have a open town forum or whatever if there's an ineffectual board. In regard to capital planning issues, I have spoken to Jason about this specific issue, and I, they, I believe his, now, this is a while back when this started, but I believe his opinion was that it is, they are not there, they are not in the same position as Public Works Planning Board should be to look at those kind of projects. Also, the Public Works Planning Board was made as part of the legislature in 1991. Capital planning was made last year. So, if there's any board that should be given precedence overlooking at issues regarding public works, I would think it would be the first one. In regard to the actual charter of that, I do agree wholeheartedly that the charter of that group that was established in 1991 is exceptionally vague, and it should be looked at. But I do feel that we have to meet and attack one challenge at a time, because I think that's a much more involved process to rework the charter on that. Whereas, this is a very simple issue that the people that sit on that board that should be looking at these projects, and it's supposed to be advising Select Board, but also advising citizens on the worthiness of those projects, those people should be appointed and looked at and chosen by committees and boards that are stakeholders in those projects. They have a vested interest in making sure that those projects are done correctly and looked at properly, and I don't believe that a single person, having the majority appointing authority on that board, can do the same thing. In regard to the, what was the first comment you made was...
About what's first?
Oh, yes. Thank you. This is the opportune time. If there is anything that we should have learned in this town over the last two to three years, it is that our DPW was in need of oversight, I'm going to say politely. And to say we should wait to hire a new person and then decide what the oversight is, I think is a really incorrect way to approach the job hiring process. And I've said this to many people individually that are sitting up there, that this is the opportune time to provide that job description that ensures proper oversight. We are the town, we are the employers of that position, and we deserve that oversight. Now, I understand that that is not an oversight board, but just having a proper look at projects instead of, again, one person as a superintendent of the DPW making these decisions, I think is a really valuable resource that is part of our legislature, and we should not give up on.
I'm going to yield to, I'm sure other people have questions, we could go on and on about it.
Yeah.
Thank you. As a member of the Public Works Planning Board, I share your frustration, actually.
I'm a signer of the petition.
I share your frustration. I, I guess, I actually like the broad charter. I think there is a lot of things, are a lot of things that the Public Works Planning Board should be doing, should have been doing, and hasn't been doing. And again, as a minority member who's tried to take on some of those tasks, it's been frustrating. I would have written the list of the appointing authorities a little differently from what you did, but I think that the real issue is that we need change there, and we need, again, another input to the appointment process to hopefully allow the board to realize its potential. So, I certainly support the concept. Don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward. Just a couple of questions. Have you spoken to the moderator at all about the citizen's petition that you're bringing forth?
I have spoken to him a number of times in regard to the board and the appointments on the board and the inactivity of the board. One of those conversations is what instigated his meeting with you and the chair of that board here in November. I've not spoken to him specifically about this petition and rearranging the appointing authority, because I also don't think it should be his decision.
I wondered, because the 1991 legislation was so vague, and being a home rural state, if we really need, and I guess this might be a question for you, it might not be a question for you, maybe a question for town council, do we need to petition the legislature if this was a change, you know, that the board wanted to do, or is it something that we could do internally?
I have been...
The former. You've got to petition it, it's a law.
I have been advised that you cannot make the change personally.
Okay. And lastly, one appointed by the Health Department.
Water.
But why not the Board of Health?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
And you're right. That is, that will be, when the motion is made at town meeting, it will be made as written with that exception, that that phrase be changed from Board of Health, from Health Department to Board of Health.
Okay, so it was specific for water?
Well, that was the thought, is to put stakeholders in public works projects in charge of appointing to that board.
Nope, I get that. I'm just, I'm kind of looking at it holistically. Go ahead.
I think that the Health Department is or should be very involved in issues regarding water in this town.
And other environmental issues, too.
Environmental issues, among others. Right.
Okay, I mean, I just had a little concern with the, what I envisioned the Public Works Planning Board doing is, we talked about sidewalks, and we talked about whatnot, and I just don't know specifically if we're appointing somebody for, specifically for water?
No, no, just that I would think that that department has the authority, not the authority, that's probably the wrong...
I know what you're saying.
The background or the interest in making sure that that is a properly examined issue.
Okay.
And to have them as stakeholders in that part of it, and to use them to wisely advise or wisely appoint somebody that has a background or interest in that.
Okay, that's it. Thank you. Thanks, Patty. And I believe we're going to try to get you on a Board of Health agenda for next week. Oh, perfect. Okay, great. So, we'll be talking more specifically about the Board of Health piece on that. So, this is a pretty heavy Planning Board appointment. Did you consider any other configuration outside of this?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to elaborate?
I mean, is there something that you think is missing? I know that there's restrictions. It has to be an elected board.
Uh-huh.
It has to be an elected position or elected board to appoint to this. I really just went with Planning Board because I was looking for, like I said, keep saying, people that are stakeholders in the kinds of projects that the Public Works Department is spearheading.
Mm-hmm.
And that is such an essential and enormous part of our budget and spending, it demands being looked at effectively and thoroughly.
Yeah.
I just would assume that the Planning Board would know the proper people.
The only thing I would add to that is I think that the Select Board has...
I mean, not the Select Board.
No, 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 you said it right. I'm just, I'm just bringing up the Select Board in this, and I was curious as to your thought, if you considered having the Select Board having any part in the appointment process here.
You know, we did discuss that. I think that the issue is, like, you guys got a lot on your shoulders. I mean, you have a lot of things to appoint in making people on the Select Board, you know, part of another, I didn't think that was a wise move, just...
I just, I think this board has a large part in what happens with the DPW, so that's why I brought it up.
Well, but on the other hand, the Public Works Planning Board is reporting to the Select Board. It works at the pleasure of the Select Board and is supposed to, I don't know what the word they use in there, not advise or whatever, but report to the Select Board.
Yeah.
So, it's probably not appropriate for then a Select Board to appoint members to a board that reports back to it.
Yeah, I guess I would, I would look for something that's maybe a little bit more balanced in here, so...
You know, it probably could be amended at town meeting if there is a majority of people that feel that there is a better way to balance it, considering the different options that were available.
Right.
I thought that was a wise move. Again, it was just to create a better balance of the majority appointing authority for that board and put it in the appropriate hands.
Understood. Thank you.
So, I still don't think the issue is who appoints us. I think the issue is the entity itself. And I don't disagree that maybe the right answer is DPW needs some type of board like Youth and Family Services, like the library, Council on Aging, to really, you know, dig in and be a sounding board for big projects, et cetera. I don't necessarily disagree with that, but remember, what we've agreed to do is to put this down until we get a new DPW superintendent. We think that's a critical path. Get that person in place, consult with that person, see what they think about this thing. But I, Sam, I respectfully disagree with you think the charge is lovely. That charge is so broad, it's three words, three verbs, right? Planning, managing, and financing the town. It doesn't even say DPW, just to be clear. So, you know, PWB could go to Brian Ballantyne and tell him how to float bonds if they wanted to, right? So, I just think, it's, so, I talked to someone who has been around this whole time and was absolutely there when this took place, remembered it very well. He said, "Kathy, this was thrown in at the last minute. It was a boondoggle for somebody." He said, "It wasn't thought out, it just got thrown in there." So, there was no real thought behind this in 1991. They were just trying to get this law, there were some people who didn't want to combine the four departments, so they did this to appease someone, I don't know who it was, to do it. So, there's this, you know, it's, I think, a ridiculously broad charge, and of course, again, it's all advisory, so no wonder it hadn't worked. It just, it makes no sense to me. So, I'm not so concerned about who appoints, I'm more concerned about what it is. So, we'll see what town meeting says as far as what they think. You always make a good case, but, and then we are going to take this back up once we get a superintendent as far as what we think should happen to it, but it's a serious thing. You do have to change a law to get this changed, so we need to know what we're doing and not, you know, do it more than once. So, thank you, Patty. I know how...
Would you ever consider not doing something with a board because there was an employee that needed to be hired? I mean, this is an employee that's probably not even going to be a citizen, a...
I'm more concerned about what it is. So we'll see what town meeting says as far as what they think. You always make a good case. But, and then we are gonna take this back up once we get a superintendent as far as what we think should happen to it. But it's a serious thing. You do have to change a law to get this changed, so we need to know what we're doing and not, you know, do it more than once. So thank you, Patty. I know how...
Would you ever consider not doing something with a board because there was an employee that needed to be hired? I mean, this is an employee that's probably not even gonna be a citizen in Southborough, and you're gonna wait to make an effectual board until that person is hired? I'm sorry, that doesn't, in my mind, that doesn't really make sense. And as we have seen in the last three-plus years, a board is only as effectual as its chair and its members choose to be.
True statement, but I guess I disagree with the premise that effectual, it's not effectual right now, we all know, but I don't, we know the problem, we, we've laid them out in public, right? We know what the issues are with it. But I do think that the new DPW superintendent should have background, et cetera, that would be helpful to help us make a decision to get to a structure that we really do have the oversight that we think is appropriate. You're right, totally complicated department, probably the most complicated besides schools, right? As far as what all you have to, what's all on their plate. It is a hard job, no doubt about it. So the answer may be that they really do need a sounding board, but that's not how this is structured. It's structured, it's not a sounding board right now. It's, they don't review automatically.
But it could be.
It could, that's why, so, you just gotta give us a chance to think through this as far as what it really should be. So we're not disagreeing that we may need something. I just don't think this is what we need. But I'm one person, and I'm, you know, when we've had these advisory articles, I'm interested in seeing what the town... I mean, it says, I don't even know why we vote on it, because you're asking us to do something. So let's see what the town says on the 25th as far as what they think. We will certainly listen. And then hopefully we're, we'll be closer to getting a DPW superintendent in place. We really can take this up and discuss what we should do to make sure we've got the right structure to get these complicated projects done correctly. So we hear you. We hear you about the problem. I just don't necessarily agree with the, this is a solution just changing the appointing authority.
And Kathy, from a timing standpoint, even if we decided immediately after town meeting to do this, my bet is it's not gonna happen until 2024 legislatively, so I think we've got time to consider.
It's definitely the long game.
Yeah.
So we'll figure out how to do it. We'll know that, too, as far as, you know, what the process is to get a... I don't know if it's, I don't know if we're modifying the special act. It's a new special act. I don't know. But we'll figure out what the process is. So we are absolutely open to continue to discuss this, so you should leave there with that confidence, and let's see what town meeting says.
Okay.
Okay? Yep. All right. So the next two, I don't, I don't know Heidi Davis, but I know everybody who's here tonight. I don't see her here. I don't see her in the audience. Do you?
No.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna skip the next two, which relate to 5G communications. The next two are Mr. Perry's. So David, come on up. So 43 and 44, you can talk about them. Whatever order you want to. You are?
Okay, which, which one is, which one is, I'm not quite sure which one's first.
It's the letter is first.
Letter to the Inspector General is 43.
The Inspector General, okay. Let me just read this. It's not the one to cease all work. It's the other one. Is it the other one? And to see if the town will vote to, oh, sorry, I'm David Perry, 22 Main Street, Southborough. This is a citizen petition article related to the project called the St. Mark's Road Project up on Marlborough Road, which everyone knows has been a, pretty much a disaster for two years. And it's coming up to this town meeting for a critical vote, whether or not it's gonna move forward or not. So this is an article which comes right at the end of town meeting. If the article put forward by the selectman to ask for a land swap and a discontinuance of St. Mark's Road, if that fail, if that passes, these two articles go away, obviously, because the project's been approved. If the article is rejected and the land swap and the road discontinuance are rejected, then these two articles come forward. This article comes forward. So this article is to do the following, to see if the town of Southborough will vote to request the select board and/or advisory committee to write to the state inspector general informing the inspector general that Southborough Town Meeting voted to request a forensic investigation of the two town departments which managed the St. Mark's Road Project. These two departments are the Department of the Town Administrator and the Department of Public Works. Together, they were responsible for the project's planning, financing, and management. Town Meeting has voted to reject the project, Town Meeting has voted to reject the project and believes that a thorough investigation of the project is needed to clarify how it was managed and who was responsible. Since the state inspector general does not usually reveal the results of their investigations to the public, and since Town Meeting believes it would benefit from receiving a report of the investigation, therefore, Town Meeting requests the town advisory committee to conduct its own investigation and to report back to Town Meeting. Now, here's an explanation. That, that was the actual wording of the article. Here's an explanation. I'll just read it. It's printed in the warrant, I think. A forensic investigation is the only way to get to the bottom of what went wrong with this project and why. The inspector general is the appropriate state agency. The state, the town advisory committee has the following in the town bylaw, quote, "The advisory committee shall have authority at any time to investigate the books, accounts, and management of any department of the town." It goes on like that, end quote. So the word "in the town" bylaw actually gives advisory committee the authority to investigate different departments. The town, the major concerns about management are these, three, four, five. One, the attempt to spend over $1 million in town funds to build an entirely new road, which is not needed because the new road will replace an existing road which has worked fine for decades. Two, the attempt to swap a land parcel now used as a public road and therefore has substantial value for a privately owned land parcel now used as lawn grass and therefore has less value than a road. Three, the attempt to build a private parking lot for St. Mark's School and have it paid for by the town. Four, the misuse of state DOT grant funds in two ways, namely, A, spending state funds on non-eligible items, and B, spending state funds on private property. In addition, there were many other problems too numerous to mention here. I'm gonna end there.
So we, so this one is basically asking either select board or advisory committee to send a letter to the inspector general if the land swap fails.
Right.
And then second, you're asking the advisory committee to consider doing a forensic audit, correct? Okay, all right, so we got that one. Any questions on this one, nobody? Okay, now, why don't you talk about the next one, which is 44, which I believe is to send back the $290,000 to the state?
No, no.
No?
No, the next article is to see if the town will vote to cease all work...
Okay, sorry.
...by the town on the St. Mark's Road Project. Actually, it really makes frankly more, more sense if this one came before the, the one I just did, because logically, this one should go first. To see if, the wording in the warrant is this, to see if the town will vote to cease all work by the town on the St. Mark's Road Project. That's the wording, period. So this, again, it only comes forward if the selectman's article asking for a land swap and asking for a road discontinuance fails. If it fails, then this article comes forward to see if the town will vote to cease all work by the town on the St. Mark's Road Project. If this article isn't voted, it's hanging there. You haven't, Town Meeting hasn't approved a land swap and it hasn't approved a, a road discontinuance, but it's still hanging there. What's gonna happen? This makes it clear that all work will cease. Now, here's the explanation. This project needs to be terminated because it lacks legitimate public purpose. There are three issues. One, the intersection. The original justification put forward by the former DPW superintendent was that the existing St. Mark's Road intersection was flooding. But this flooding was merely a short-lived, shallow ponding during heavy rainstorms. It was primarily caused by St. Mark's School quite recently when St. Mark's School built a stone wall without permits within the right-of-way of the road. And that blocked the natural flow of water away from the road. This flooding could easily have been solved by St. Mark's School by simply removing a section of the wall they built. However, instead, town DPW installed a very expensive underground pipe drainage system under Marlborough Road, under 85, that is, all the way from the intersection right down to Main Street. And by the way, ironically, that solves the problem of the flooding at the intersection. It completely goes away. The simplest way would have been St. Mark's knocked down the wall. The more complicated, expensive way has been done by DPW, which eliminates any drainage or flooding up at the intersection, because there's a 12-inch pipe going all the way down to Main Street now. And by the way, there are a few, if you go up there, you'll see these flat iron, what'd you call them? These, these sort of catch basins, these sort of sumps, whatever they are. You just take that flat lid off and put a grill in. That, that's a catch basin. It forms a storm drainage basin to catch the water. That's all it needs doing up there. If you look up, there's five or six going up Route 85. So the second issue, traffic. Remember, the issue is...
David, if you can stick to the article as far as what you're trying to accomplish, which is you want to stop the project completely if the article fails, right?
Right, right. Okay, and let me go to the last two things. Traffic. What is the, the excuse I go again for this project lies in a, in the intersection. The claim is the intersection was failing because it was flooding. The other issue was the, the intersection is failing because of traffic. But the fact is, the intersection works fine and has an excellent safety record. It has good sight distance, better sight distance now than it had two years ago because they cut the bushes down. It has no serious, no history of serious accidents. It was completely rebuilt in 2005 to allow larger vehicles with, with larger radio. And the conclusion is it does not need to be replaced. It's a perfectly viable intersection and road. And the last thing is the parking lot. This is a parking lot for St. Mark's School. It's not for the town. It's a private parking lot intended for St. Mark's School. The town should not be using public funds to build a private lot, parking lot for St. Mark's School. St. Mark's can easily build their own parking lot on their own land, just as existed before this project began. One question raised is, will all the funds spent by the town so far be wasted if we stop now? We've spent about half a million. The answer is no, the funds will not be wasted because ironically, the drainage system which has been installed has solved the intersection flooding problem. And also, the gravel that's been put up there for the new road can be used by St. Mark's School for its own parking lot. Therefore, St. Mark's has already benefited substantially from what's been done so far. Now is the time for the town to stop and St. Mark's to build their own parking lot on their own land.
Thank you. Andrew?
I don't have any questions. I think there's some statements in there that I don't think are completely accurate, but we've talked about this. I don't support either of these articles. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Sam?
I've heard Mr. Perry's comments about this in a variety of meetings, so I don't have any questions at this point. Thank you.
Lisa, Chelsea, neither will you. Thank you, David, for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, so we can't start the next agenda item until 8:30. Shopsey needs to wait to 8:30 to call their meeting to order. So we're gonna keep going, and then we'll come back to it once we get to 8:30. Okay, so reports. So Chair Report, I've got a couple of things. I just want to update everybody on the status of the proposed IMA with Hawkinson on the water connection. So it's moving forward very nicely. Won't be, we, we may look at it at the 21st. I'm not sure yet. I may be ready to look. It won't be signed before town meeting, that, that much I can tell you. But all the terms that we had agreed to are in it now. They were, we're through that. So we're just basically doing the things you do when you start going back and forth. So there are relatively small things left, I think, at this point. So you should see it pretty soon, and it may be the 21st when you actually get to take a look at it for the first time. Okay? Any questions? All right. We'll talk about the article that is related to it when we get to the warrant, okay? So that's still to come. The second thing is the One Stop Grant Application. One Stop for Growth. So everybody knows what the dates are. Right now, I don't know. See, this is where I don't know who's really in charge of making sure we put this together. So we gotta get that straight. We've got plenty of time, except that, there's kinda two parts to this process. If you want the state to kinda take a preliminary look at what you want, we've got until the 17th to put in, the, March 17th, to put in the expression of interest. Now, we missed the first deadline, which would have allowed us to put in five different projects. So what I don't know, Vanessa, you may know, I don't know what it means now. Can we only put in one? Two. Okay, so we can put in two, but we've gotta do that by March 17th. We want them to take a look at this and come back and maybe give a suggestion about how it looks, what we might do to make it better, right? But we gotta have projects to do it, you know? So this is March 7th, and so this is, you know, 10 days away. So we've gotta decide tonight, I think, what to do to encourage people to go forward. As far as I know, no one has come forward. Maybe one? So you've got one?
Shopsey, yes.
Okay, so hold that thought for a second. Then, it's actually due no later than June the 2nd, but they will take them beginning May 1st. So that's our real deadline. But if we want some help and some suggestions about how to make it look better, we've gotta move pretty fast. Okay? So Shopsey's got one, right? And you're, you're gonna do that through Shopsey and submit it, right? And you're gonna try to do that before the 17th?
I mean, should we coordinate that process?
Yeah, that's the, I don't know, you know, it seems...
Maybe there are better projects than the Shopsey one, potentially. I don't know what Shopsey's proposing.
Excuse me?
Could be.
Shut your mic off.
Okay, go ahead, Dorian.
Shopsey has, will be having an application for the One Stop, and that application will be in Vanessa's hands by Monday. That will give her a little over a week to get it into the, I guess there's something online that she's the only one who has access to.
And what are you applying for?
We're just applying for, I think, a technology grant.
Okay. So now, this is where I'm confused, so help me. It says you can do two expressions of interest. Two per committee? Two per town? Well, what's the two applied to?
For town, I think, yeah.
Okay, so here's one, right? So we could do one more as far as the expression of interest. But are we then limited to how many we actually submit in May? Two, what?
I think it's the two, isn't it?
The two? Okay, so we could have done five if we'd gone in earlier, right? So we, we missed that. So now we can do two to get a upfront look, but the same two that we need to go back with in May, is that right? Okay, everybody agree with that?
I think so.
Okay, I don't know, so I'm, I'm asking.
We've been planning to do it since the beginning, so when there were five available, we were gonna apply for one, so.
Okay.
We've been there from the beginning.
So there's one. But Vanessa, we know no other so far, as far as the second, right? And so if we don't make the 17th, we can still do it, but there's not gonna be any help from the state as far as how it should look.
So can we take the feedback of what we applied for last year? See what we didn't get, any feedback from the state, and reach out to those committees and see if they want to reapply? And what we've done in the past is met with a Shopsey rep, a Capitol rep, EDC rep, planning, and kind of vetted through the things that were on the table and then prioritized from there, so.
But how are we gonna get all that done before the 17th? So we're just gonna forego the expression of interest and just let Shopsey do the one, right?
Well, I think we at least need, I think we should at least look at what we did that we didn't get last year and see if that is still something that we wanna do, and then take the feedback. Because the state gives you feedback on why you didn't get it, right? So, under, you know, if, if those groups are still, I would at least start there, so you know where...
I know, we had applied last year, and our grant was very well-written, and we were in very good standing. And then this board asked us to step back and let EDC get the grant. So EDC went and went through the entire process, because we had done the expression of interest. And then we were told to take a step back, which we did. EDC got the $40,000 grant, so.
Why would we not, if I may, sorry?
Go ahead.
Why would we not, at this point, send out a note and just see, I agree, Chelsea, to look at what we have out there from last year, but why would we not just take the time to send a quick note to the chairs of Planning, EDC, who else did you say? Capitol. And just see if, if they've discussed it and if they even have any interest in doing this before we take a look at that.
Vanessa, haven't we already done that?
Not currently.
Okay.
Okay. But can I suggest another?
Yes, yeah.
A quick question. What, what is Shopsey applied for? How much money? For what project?
Right now, we're just doing the expression of interest, and then we'll sit down with the board. So I have Sarah doing that work right now.
How much money roughly do you expect?
I believe it's around $40,000.
$40,000. I think it's interesting to look at what these grants are. If you look at it, there are three basic components. One is mass works infrastructure, and the grants that they give for those kind of things are... are in the order of a couple of million dollars or so. And they do it for sewer, water, sidewalks, as a matter of fact, and stormwater control. And the DHCD housing choice is the second bucket, and those grants turn out to be like 50 grand or something like that, so much smaller. And the third piece is mass development for things like Commonwealth places, which is 5K to 30 or 40K kind of thing. So seems to me that it would be helpful for us as a board to figure out, are there things in here that we would really like to get that are big-ticket items, that we could get a million dollars to do something that's more significant potentially? And you look at what kind of grants they give and sort of aim for the kind of things they do, and then figure out, can we get a better return for the effort here? And you're right, we don't have much time at this point, but it would be interesting to find at least one more place to, you know, make a pitch and say, can we think about something that, and again, sidewalks is a place where we're going to spend a lot of money, and they, the mass works thing spends, gives a lot of grants for sidewalks. So maybe that's a sweet spot that you can aim for and do something more proactively versus asking, I mean, we could ask the boards and departments, but I'd rather be proactive from this end and say, here's what we want to give a push for.
We've just got to leave here tonight knowing what we're doing. We've got to get this settled, not to give my colleagues a hard time. But see, this is where, you know, if we had this grant writer that would coordinate this whole thing, so I'm just still trying to figure out, even if, you know, we reach out to Planning, Capital, so Shopsey, EDC, then are they going to go off on their own? And, but we only can do two, so do we have to make sure we only do two? So I'm just real confused about how, I'm still confused about this.
We got one, apparently, so at least one more, and, you know, maybe there's something that's, again...
But I think we've got to appoint someone to take charge of this tonight to make sure it, that we get, what we do makes sense, and we, if you've got competing ones, which I'm not sure we're going to have, but if we did, we pick what we think has got the better chance of success.
Sounds like Vanessa has done that in the past, so maybe that's a Vanessa task.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure, Kathy, that there's maybe been a discussion that we're not aware of.
Yeah.
And before we say, okay, we're going to do it for this, we just make sure. I would imagine the answer's probably going to be no, in, you know, in having a direct conversation with the chairs. So, but again, I think it's, that's a worthy place. We could agree to start, Sam, and if there's not a second, then sidewalks may be a great place to go, you know, through our board.
Okay, so we agree that Vanessa's going to reach out to Capital, Planning, EDC, right? Shopsey's all taken care of, right? They know what they're doing. And basically say, we're trying to get this done. There's a real short timeline as far as the expression of interest. I don't know how complicated the expression of interest is. Is it really detailed? So it's pretty simple. Okay, so we could get this done. But again, you know, is Capital going to meet before the 17th? Is, you know, EDC going to meet? Is Planning going to meet? I don't know to do this.
Well, I would just hope, Kathy, we're, you know, we're looking at the 7th today, that if they were looking to do something, they would have already had discussions. So I guess that's what I'm looking for, to see if there's been any discussions or any plan for this. And honestly, I think the answer's probably going to be no, but I think that's just the first place to start. And then whether for sidewalks, Sam, I don't know if, do we really, would we really require by the 17th an expression of interest or just put it in as one of the five in, was it June 1st?
Two.
Two, I'm sorry. But it could be one of the two that we put in if no one else steps forward.
We can do that. Or, I mean, water is another place where the mass works spends a lot of money. So we've talked about water, firefighting water for Pine Hill, for example, as a project.
Ooh, I'd vote for that one.
Somebody has to recuse herself for that, but...
I might.
But again, a good project that is something that they typically fund, and, you know, you could do something there.
Just so you know, Kathy, we're also applying for another state grant, and I don't have all the details. Sarah just found it. So we will be applying for some type of a housing grant, I believe it is, but she has all the details.
Good.
So we talked to someone from the state, and he went through so much information over the phone, so, you know, we're going to apply for a second grant for us too as well, so just so you have a heads up.
So I think it sounds like we're about to anoint Vanessa to take charge of this because someone's got to take charge of this and see it through. We've got five people looking at each other thinking the other one's doing something and it won't get done. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. So Vanessa, you're anointing to help us get through this and try to meet this deadline. All right? Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Andrew, I am so happy to turn this one over to you.
Yep, so I'm just providing a members' report that the St. Mark's Street Park Working Group last evening voted unanimously to send over to the Select Board a final concept plan of the proposed design of the park. And do you want to put it up? So this is the concept plan that we voted to approve and send to the Select Board, and as many of you will recall, there was a public forum in November at which Ms. Burns-Fiori had created kind of her own concept plan that was, proved to be very attractive to a lot of members of the working group. And then from there, basically, from November to this point, we got some feedback from some other people about other features that would be good to integrate into the plan. And we had VHB kind of make the revised version of Ms. Fiori's plan kind of jive in a way with some of their existing engineering work. And so this is just really a, it's still just a concept plan. But I'm excited about this, and I think that it's reflected a lot of work where the, really the whole point of the working group over so much time was to listen to all, you know, different boards that were, have an interest in this. And I am, you know, in listening to some of the other conversation about this entire issue, the St. Mark's Street project, I've always been excited about the actual construction of the park itself because it's right next to the library. It's going to function as an extension of the library space, and it's also in a very historically important, sensitive area where it can be the focal point of the history walk that really was the original genesis of this entire project. So there's one caveat that I have to make about this particular plan, which is Mr. Miller made a very good point last night, that if you look to the right of it, it depicts the north of the relocated St. Mark's Street as green, where it's not going to be. It's intended to be a parking lot. So we've asked VHB to come back with a more, in a way, accurate one that would show the curb cut in and the parking lot. But otherwise, there's the concept plan that we have, and thank you to everyone that contributed to the working group. I think that there's not that much work for the working group to do before town meeting, and particularly, I think Margaret Landry did an outstanding job of, has done an outstanding job so far of being the chair of the working group. And listening to people and getting a lot of feedback to get to the point where we are.
Great. Andrew, thank you, and Marguerite, thank you as well, obviously. You guys put a lot of work into this. Vanessa, can you put the plan back up? I just have one question, and thank you for answering, Andrew, about the green where the parking lot's going to be. I was like, that's interesting. The one question I had was on the three shade trees and the placement of them. Is there, or was there any consideration, Andrew, to putting the shade trees closer to where people may be sitting to offer, you know, closer to around the circle where the benches are, to provide some shade? And one of the pictures that you portray, in the top right-hand corner, shows people sitting underneath the tree. I think that's probably from Niri during, you know, one of the concert events. Was there any consideration to at least maybe relocating one of the shade trees there to be able to make it a little bit more comfortable on a hot day if somebody chose to sit there or an event, or the library was doing something there as well? Thank you.
In all the different iterations of this that have gone back and forth, I definitely recall that there were prior versions of this that did have the trees located there. And here, instead, there's native flowering plants there that are the kind of gathering space there. So there was consideration of that. This final plan doesn't have that, but I don't think that, you know, that precludes there's other ways you can generate shade in the future if you wanted to. And one of the things that came out of all these discussions was the existing place for story hour for the library right now is actually on top of where the library septic tank is, which, this is an improvement over that.
Thank you. Sam?
No, no questions. I've been following the committee meetings, and again, the committee has done a remarkable job in terms of a much more complex project than I think any of them envisioned when they took on the assignment. So I think this does represent a wide range of feedback and a fair amount of compromise from a variety of interests, and it would be great to get this space available for use by the town. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. What's a rain garden?
Stormwater collector.
Okay, a rain garden, it has like a sump, and it helps aid the drainage, and there's also other vegetation that grows up, and, so it's a way, it's a landscape feature that also is part of a drainage system.
Okay. I'm just asking from like a tick risk. It's, you don't walk through it? Okay.
You would not want to, yeah, walk through it. It's more just a...
There's crevices.
Yes.
Like a depressed, specific, depressed area.
Okay.
As I would draw a sink through, I'd survive.
Oh, you have to come to the mic, sorry. So it's a, it's a, so Patty just said it's a depressed area that you would not walk through.
Detention basin, basically.
Okay.
For stormwater.
And we have to do that for drainage purposes, or is that the recommendation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The engineers wanted a little more cushion.
This was actually a feature of the original...
Okay.
...designs back from June 2021.
Okay. And in terms of a cost, are we within our 240?
Yep, so it's been, again, based on the discussion we had, you know, this is just a concept plan.
Yeah.
It's intended to, if town meeting votes to approve both articles, then the next step would be to prepare a bid package based on this concept plan. And we have stressed repeatedly that the goal, and this, this concept plan was designed to fit within this, is that the all-in, both for the cost of the engineering work that would be necessary to prepare the bid package, and then the cost of construction would be under the 250, $250,000 that's in Article 13.
Okay.
Lucky number 13.
Great, thank you.
I went to the meeting last, I've been to the last few, and it was Yanima's vote to approve this, so I want to make that clear. This has just been Yonmin's work, and yes, kudos to Marguerite too, and everybody. We've got, let's see, Grant is here tonight, James is here tonight, Andrew's here tonight, so we've got anybody else?
Kevin.
Oh, Kevin, there's Kevin. Sorry, Kevin, you're hiding behind there. So we've got the five people that were there last night that voted for this, so they're all here tonight. And look who's clapping here, Ms. Fiori. So after the meeting was adjourned, it was just a really great atmosphere. I really, it's just amazing how well this has come together. It's hard to design something by committee. Everybody's got their idea of what should be there, you know? You had to give up, you had to compromise. So this was really, and that's why James, I mean, he really is a compromiser. He'd sit in the middle of them, he'd turn to right and turn to left and try to bring the compromise together. It really was fun to watch. But I am thrilled to death with this. And for those naysayers that keep saying, stop the project, you know, everything's wrong, don't do it, why on earth, if you could end up with a park for as little money as we're going to spend to finish this, wouldn't you want a park in the center of a town? They're good for people. They're good, they're healthy things to have. Towns want them. So I am so optimistic that this is going to happen finally. I mean, that, you know, late in the fall, we're really going to have a park, they were all going to enjoy, just like we enjoyed the road, right? The new road we have down there, how nice that is. And it gets used for kids, whatever, and we're proud that we did it. So kudos to you, Andrew, too.
We had a good ending, but a rough beginning, as like some of them, because of owl problems.
Yes.
And it's very stressful, these, thing doesn't work, you go through all the steps, doesn't promote the panelists, the camera doesn't work, so I kind of reached my breaking point last night with the owl issue, and I know that Jay is also aware of it, so we're going to hopefully find some better way of doing that. But that, the owl technology has its limits, so I guess then I would, I am very, going to be very supportive of the proposal to retrofit the public safety building so that volunteers on boards don't have to spend like 45 minutes trying to figure out how to like sub in the owl park.
Fighting the owls.
And just to add a little bit on to what Ms. Malinowski just asked about the cost, the article says, up two. It's funded by free cash. There's no more money but $2.50. So, you know, they'll keep going back to that, they'll keep sharpening the pencil until they get it below $2.50. So we will not spend more than $2.50 to finish this park. That is what we have to spend, and that's what, that's what we'll do.
Okay. Can I add a member, just a quick comment under Members' Report?
Yes.
So on behalf of the board, I wanted to extend our condolences to the family of Charles Keller. He passed away recently, and he was a 31-year employee of the police department. So again, just to extend our condolences to the family and the gratitude for the service that he provided the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Mr. Purple?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've just got a couple of quick items, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Hale for, sorry.
Do I need to leave, or do I need to leave for one of your updates?
She's, he is going to update on DPW, Superintendent?
Ms. Hale will, but you don't have to leave just yet.
Okay, let me know.
Okay. Two, so two quick items. One, I know the board is aware, but the Supreme Judicial Court in Massachusetts did release a decision today regarding the case of Louise Barron versus Daniel Kalenda and the town of Southborough. The counsel who represents the town is appointed by the insurance company to view in that case, and we'll have additional information after they take a look at that, but I wanted to make sure the board was aware of that. The other issue, and again, I'd just like to give credit where credit is due. You did receive something late this afternoon from Chris Leroy, who's been helping out with the tree removal process. If you looked at the list, there are 54 that are all gone, 50 who are taken care of by the contractor that we have through the regional bid, four of which were taken care of by DPWs. We have eight left. We have three additional dates where we have crane, the crane assigned for the company because some of these trees are rather large, on March 16th, March 30th, and April 5th. That'll finish the list. However, if there are any cancellations, we could finish earlier than April 1st, and I'm sure that we'll be working on a new batch for another joint hearing with this board and Planning Board. So I just wanted to, again, thank Chris Leroy for the work that he's been doing to shepherd this and successfully check that box.
He's been doing a great job communicating as he goes along, too. It's very, very helpful to see all that and be able to be in, in front of that when people ask about what's going on with this particular tree. So kudos to Chris.
Yeah, he's been good about that. And I think that our office between Ms. Hale, Ms. Barry, has been making sure that we get that out on the social media and everything. And we never get any likes, but I'm sure the people are seeing them. So, so it is, it is good to see. In terms of updates on the hiring processes, I'll turn it over to Ms. Hale, who's really been coordinating those. Oh, sorry.
Lisa, she'll do DPW first, so you can come right back in and hear on the, okay.
All right.
Go ahead.
So I did speak with the consultant, Bernie Lynch, from Community Paradigm, just a few days ago regarding the DPW recruitment. He's been doing his own advertising, as well as we've posted it, of course, you know, on our own social media channels. The deadline is not until March 20th. So he expects to see quite a few more applications, you know, closer to the deadline. He is also doing his own personal outreach to a lot of engineering firms that do a lot of municipal work to try and expand the area and region where we have been advertising in the past. So he doesn't have anything specific to report right now, but expects to do that certainly by a week from Monday, which would be March 20th.
Okay.
So that's the deadline, deadline for DPW.
Okay, March 20th, okay. So let's get Lisa back in.
Yeah.
So just to be clear of what happened, why Ms. Purple's jumping up and down here. Her husband is a contractor for the DPW for snowplow, so she has recused herself totally from the search from the, for the new DPW superintendent.
And moving on to building commissioner, I just wanted to, again, commend Lori Lavoli for her years of service. Last Friday was her last day. So we are working with our part-time inspectors to make sure the office is, of course, you know, running as normal. We have 12 applicants so far. The deadline was February 28th for that application. So we're in the process of today, we were sort of screening a number of those resumes. I would tell you, at least probably half of them have municipal experience in other communities as a building commissioner or a local or part-time inspector. So, you know, we have been able to, at least right now, before we've met with anyone, do see a pool of people with good municipal experience. So we'll be working to schedule those first round interviews, hopefully by the beginning of next week, that I'll be joined by the town planner and the conservation agent, and hopefully a member of the ZBA to participate in those interviews.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, Mr. Purple, you have forgotten the most important part of your report. I'm sorry. We would like to know, do the Red Sox have any chance at all this year?
I think the only chance they have is in spring training, right now. I mean, it's, you know, they're, they're undefeated. But I think that they tend to have a little bit of struggling against good pitching. I think they've got some young talent that looks good. But I think it's, it's going to be an interesting year.
For those who don't know, Mr. Purple was our designee to spring training over the last week.
And just returned on a red eye this morning. So it's looking pretty good for being up most of the night. Hope is eternal, so we will see. Okay. So we have got, okay, we got to correct one thing. So I try so hard to get the votes for the appointments with the right terms. Well, I'm wrong with what we did. So we got to re-vote Steve Holland's term at 6:30, 23. So I'm going to make a motion to appoint Steve Holland as the newest member to the CIPC for a term ending 6:30, 23.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, done. Okay, so, Mr. Mills, come on up. Who's here with you? Freddie is here. So now, why did Dorian leave? Do we know? Okay. She said that? Who's here from Shopsi besides Dorian?
Tom's back there, I think, yeah.
Tom's back there.
Okay, so they've got, so you don't have a quorum, so you're fine, right? So, but Shopsi, I think, does, right? Yeah, you're here, so.
Doug is in there, I presume.
Okay, welcome, Mr. Mills. We'll, we'll get going, and then she can call her meeting to order when she gets back in here, except that they've got a quorum here. Vanessa, do we know where she went? Bathroom? Okay, all right, so, all right, let's. Well, I think they do, because you got Andrew, Tom, okay. Shopsi's got five? What's her quorum, three or four?
Four.
Four.
There's seven.
Okay, so I guess they don't. All right, so we can keep, we can go in here. Okay, so welcome. Thank you for coming so late. Okay, so let's get, I think, the easier one out of the way first, which is Article 24, I believe, which is the CPC sponsorship or approval of the Algonquin tennis courts, excuse me, recommendation to the town to use CPC, CPA funds to fund the rebuild of the Algonquin tennis courts and basketball courts, I believe? Pickleball. Forgot, I always pickleball now. And I, and we've also got Becky Pellegrino here, too, for this reason, I assume. Okay. All right, so she's here to answer any questions we have as far as the project itself. So we have seen this project a couple times. So I don't think we've got any questions about the project itself. We just want to hear what CPC thought about it and, you know, confirm that, you know, it was a unanimous vote to, to bring it forward.
Yeah. So we've been working with the school. Is it on now?
Yeah.
Okay. So thanks for having me. Again, Andrew Mills, Chair of the CPC. Yeah, so we've been working with the school committee for a while now on what of the portions of the Algonquin project that could be fundable. We asked them to, you know, recommend to us what they, they thought was best, trying to make sure that the CPC funds were used in a way that we could track easily, that it went specifically to the CPC-funded projects or aspects of the project. That's where they came back and said, okay, we want to isolate it to the tennis courts, the pickleball, and the basketball court, which is all the, I think, original nine tennis courts that they have right now. They're going to trim down a couple of tennis courts, use pickleball courts, and have a basketball court. So the idea was that it would be easy to identify where the funds are actually being spent for CPC, that they wouldn't get commingled with other aspects that might not be fundable. And that's where we are. And we, we voted before we got the final numbers to, to make sure everyone knew that where we were standing, that we were definitely going to recommend some portion of the, the funding for the, for the tennis courts and basketball and pickleball. And then when the final numbers came in, it all worked out.
All right, that is pretty easy. So this is the complic, this is the complicating part that probably, Becky, have you, have they decided who's going to present Article 14? Okay. So what the sponsor of Article 14 has to do and explain to the town, because that's going to be the one that approves, basically approves our share of the debt for the whole project, right? That's not exactly what's happening, but that's an effect of what's being done. Now, this project has been designed by regional, their capital community's approved it. There were not, the town doesn't weigh in on the actual project. This is our way to veto it. We, the debt will go forward if the town within 60 days, I believe, doesn't reject the debt, okay? So this is within 60 days, right? So if town meeting doesn't like the project, this would be the way to, to stop the project, is to vote against this article. Okay, Article 14. So what Article 14, whoever gets up there to explain this has got to say is, okay, they've got to connect it to this article. Because the amount that's in Article 14 is the gross amount for the whole project, okay? And Southborough's share is going to be less than its proportionate share of this because of the CPC article. So before someone gets up to town meeting, so wait a minute, we just approved the whole thing, are we going to, are we doing it again? Are we double dipping on this? Someone's got to explain, no. If, you know, if Article 14 gets approved, and then you approve the CPC article that Andrew's talking about, then the amount that Southborough is going to pay, its share is going to be reduced by Article 24, okay? So that's got to be, if that wasn't clear, whoever does got to make this pretty clear so that the honest understands that this is actually going to save Southborough money. We won't pay our normal share of the debt because of this. We've got to do an IMA after-town meeting with Northborough to make sure this is clear. So that's the next step, if this all gets approved. But that's just got to be clear in case someone says, wait a minute, are we doing this twice? Okay? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. And so if anybody needs help writing that piece of it up, Select Board can help. Mara can help, whatever. Brian can help to get the language. I think it's like two sentences to, to be added to the presentation of Article 14. Okay, does that make sense? I don't think you have to say a word about it. I think 14's got to say, this is coming, this number's going to get reduced, our share of that, if the CPC article that's coming pretty soon after this passes.
Yeah, I'm just wondering from the timing aspect, if, if the town approves the whole project just in bonding or, you know, debt.
It doesn't reject the debt, is what is happening. We're just not going to reject, if it gets approved, we haven't rejected the debt.
But I, I think, I think it would be better if maybe, what is it, Article 14?
Yes.
Gets amended on the floor to say, let's reduce it by whatever we're going to fund from the CPC, so that you're not supplanting basically what town meeting originally voted on for the bonding of, or the debt for the entire project.
I hear you. And that, you know, that could be done, but then, you know, what happens when 24 fails? I don't, I don't think it will. I think there's plenty of support for this, but that's.
Maybe you talk about them together, but I, I would talk to town council. What we've, when we've talked to the coalition in Boston, CPC coalition, they've said you can't, you know, I think that would be, from my knowledge of it, it sounds like it would be like supplanting what was already approved. So, which would, you can't do with the CPC funds. So I, I would, again, I maybe talk to town council, but it seems to me it might be easier to just amend on the floor, say, we're going to reduce it by the amount that we have later for the CPC. It's still going to be this total amount. We're going to pay our fair share, but we want to do it from this way. And then it would be very clear.
So we did talk to him last night at pre-town meeting, and he seemed to be fine with the plan, but we didn't spend a whole lot of time on it either. So maybe you have a conversation with him to make sure that this goes smoothly and it's clear what, what we're voting on, so no one gets confused and votes the wrong way because they didn't understand it. Okay?
Can I just say, this, is this on?
I think it's on.
If you vote the full amount, you can't then go and vote the tennis courts afterwards because you've already funded it. That's not allowed under the legislation, the enabling legislation of creating the Community Preservation Act. You can't fund something and then go back after the fact, even if it's a few votes later, to then fund a portion of what you've already funded.
And I agree. I read what you sent Andrew Faff, so I am current on what that says. Okay, so we'll get this worked out in a way that works. And hopefully try to keep it simple for, for everybody so that we don't confuse.
Can I just ask a question? Could you pass the CPA first and then reduce the second? It makes sense to do.
I don't know why you couldn't do that.
Legally, you can't do the whole thing first. Why not do, and you're afraid that if you reduce it by the.
Let's see, a motion could be made to move it up. That could be one way to do this and get the CPC, our CPA article out of the way first, right? And it passes, then this gets reduced by the same amount. Okay, that might work. That's a good idea, Freddie.
Sorry.
Good idea. Okay, that might be the better idea.
I think it is the only legal idea.
Yeah, so if you discussed them both at the same time, voted on Article 24 first.
Yeah, and then we know it's passed, and then you can just automatically.
And then you make the motion to reduce the other one.
Yep, 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 yep. Okay, sounds like a plan. All right, so that's the relatively easy one. So the next one is, there's another proposed article, Select Board sponsors it, which is the movement of the CPC Affordable Housing Bucket over to the Affordable House Trust Fund, right? It's been done three other times, three other town meetings, eight, 10, and 11.
Kathy, sorry, can we just jump back one second to the prior conversation? Should, while we haven't signed the warrant, can we move it up tonight? So when the warrant goes to print, it's there, Mr. Purple? Can we move 24 to make it, make it 13, you know, now 14? And again, I'm just asking, can we do it? I know it's got to go to print, but it seems crazy to, to try to do it on town meeting floor when.
Sure.
Again, you could say no, if it, if it's.
It'd be much easier to do it that way.
Yeah.
Like I said, I mean, i- if there is the ability to do it, I mean, we, you know, we've got to restructure it again tomorrow before we can send it off then. So, yeah, you can do it.
This is pretty important. So I.
So do you, so do you want it in front of?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it goes first.
It'll be for the new 14.
And then if it passes, we'll amend the amount in the next article right off the top to explain, well, you don't need, you don't need 250,5,000 dollars, whatever it is, because you just passed that, so we're going to reduce it. So it should be pretty, you should help explain it.
But your presentation is going to be linked to the full, you want to do the full presentation before the CPC presentation?
Yeah.
I think probably, yes, they want to get up and describe the project, right?
Right.
Describe the project, then go to this article, right?
Yeah.
And then go, go back to the debt article.
So the moderator can combine those two articles for discussion.
Correct.
And then vote separately.
Yeah.
Can I say there could be another complication?
No.
I don't have the warrant in front of me, and I didn't memorize. How are we funding the basketball and pickleball and tennis courts? What account is it coming out of? Because if it's coming out of fiscal year, it's coming out of a fund that we haven't voted yet, you're going to have to do the budget for the CPA before you can do the article.
All right, well, let's see what it says.
It says, "From the CPA fund FY '23 budgeted reserve."
That's an existing account, so it's okay.
Okay. Is that okay? Yeah?
Is there money there to do this?
There's existing money from last year there. It's the fiscal year 24.
But is there 246,000 in that reserve?
So your point is, you haven't done fiscal year 24 yet, because that comes later, so you can't do, okay, but.
Yes, it was.
Okay, all right, so you're okay.
We were checking before we started.
All right, we get that, too. All right, good point, too. Okay, so good. I think that's a really good decision, and I think it will simplify things. Okay, all right. So Becky, we'll talk, okay?
Kathy?
Yeah.
Can you like to make motions? Can Sam make a motion to move Article 24 up to?
Sorry, Mr. Stivers, would you like to make the motion to move Article 20, Article 24 up, and it would become the new Article 14?
I'll move to move Article 24 as proposed in the current version of the warrant to become the new Article 14, and make the appropriate adjustments to other succeeding articles as a result of that.
Second? Is that second?
Oh, second. Sorry, I thought you were second.
I'm doing second, check that.
All in favor? I think that's a great decision. Okay, now, Dorian, we're going to start talking about the next one that Shopsi has interest. You want to call? We think there's one person there.
Yeah, two. You have two now. You have two now.
So we're going to bring them over?
Tom, Sam? Dorian, would you like to sit here? Are you presenting?
You have five, Dorian. Dorian, you, Tom.
Yep.
So I need to call my meeting to order?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, calling a meeting to order for the Southborough Housing Opportunity Partnership Committee, Tuesday, March 7th, 2023, at 8:57 PM.
Thank you, welcome, Shopsi. Okay, so now, in the warrant, right now, there's Article 25 that is asking town meeting to approve the transfer of the funds that are currently in the CPC Affordable Housing Bucket to the Affordable House Trust Fund. This has been, did somebody say no?
No. We're asking for this year's allotment of 55,800.
So just this year's?
Just this year's to be transferred.
This has been done three other times, eight, 10, and 11. That money to date still has not been moved over, so we want to talk about that, too. We have talked to town council about this. He has confirmed that CPC needs to approve this first, before we bring it forth. You guys have to go first and decide whether you are supporting this or not. And if you don't, then it doesn't go forward to, to town meeting. So you guys got to first, and you haven't voted, right? You haven't even talked about it as far as.
Yeah, there's been no application asking for it or anything like that, like there has been all, all the other years. So, yeah, we haven't voted on this at all.
And if you had your druthers, you would rather see this postponed? We're going to have a fall town meeting. I just don't think this is ready to be voted on.
I agree.
I mean, you, you'd have to have a meeting, and you'd have to agree, and then it's, it's in here. It, it doesn't sound like we can get everything done, even if you wanted to do it, in time for this to go forward.
I agree with that.
Anybody else? Have you, I mean, we, we, we know we're going to have a fall town meeting. We've got several things that are going there. So we're going to have a fall town meeting. So this is time to flush this out, give CPC time to meet and really discuss it as far as what your opinion of it, and then we will know what to do at that point. But we're just, we don't have time to get this done now, even if you wanted to do it. Okay, all right. So, Dorian?
Indefinitely postponed.
Yeah.
So, but you would do that.
Yeah, it's, it's a slideboard article, yeah. Because it's slideboard, okay, I, I agree. Okay, now that you're letting us do this, okay, because I didn't think.
If we're going to do one thing.
Okay. And that gets the numbering back, too, you know?
Partly, anyway.
For those who've memorized the numbers, then I don't have to re-memorize them.
Andrew? Yeah, I just, I agree that the best path forward is to postpone this, but I really hope that we can continue the discussions to hopefully have this at the fall town meeting. hope that we can continue the discussions to hopefully have this at the fall town meeting.
Okay, so that's part one. Part two, so the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee met earlier in executive session to talk about a potential purchase of a property to be used for affordable housing. So we got, we also discussed the money that was approved at the three prior town meetings, which you and I talked about on Sunday. It's roughly $197,000. So what we need to understand tonight is, what is, what are the steps or step that has to be done to officially get that moved over from the CPC Affordable Housing Buckets to the Affordable House Trust Fund? We may need some or all that money, so we are anxious to get that moved over.
Yeah, so the, we've voted on that before, to move it over when ready, when there was a product, a project ready to go forward. So it's already been approved by town meeting. I think in the past, what happened was, you know, we were, the application was coming in consistently, but nothing was happening in terms of moving forward with an affordable housing unit and with a prior select board that was in place. The direction that we were told was we weren't going to just add onesie-twosie houses going forward, so the money didn't get moved until stock or a direction was going to be given, and that's why it sat there. So with the new plan that's been put in place by the Affordable Housing Trust and Shopsey, and that something's coming forth, there has been changes, though, in the law since 2016 in terms of when the money gets moved in there, that it has to be specific for, you know, the CPC funds have to fall still with the CPC regulations and everything. So it does get complicated. There's going to have to be reporting annually on how the CPC funds were used specifically so that it can go back to the state. Basically, two different accounts if it gets, it has to be tracked separately than any other funds that might be in there from a developer or anything like that. So I think we have some work to do with the town accountant to make sure that that's all lined up, but other than that, it's just a matter of giving the okay to move the funds over.
So we started the process today with a town accountant to get an accounting of what's in there. There's about 239,000 in it right now, the Affordable House Trust Fund. We went through this tonight. We think we know where it all came from. It was a little complicated, but we think we know where it came from. Doesn't mean that some of it's not investment income. It could be, but we've asked them to basically do an accounting for it and show us exactly where the money came from. So we really know what is the CPC bucket in the Affordable House Trust Fund and what might be something else. So we've asked for that. So that's coming sometime in the near future. Once you get that, is that all CPC needs to send the email saying, "Move it"?
So that, yeah, that's pretty much all that's needed. I mean, we can move it. Again, I think we just want to make sure the process internally for tracking that. It's not, even when the funds get used, say, we purchase a house, and half the funds are CPC, and then it gets sold and the money comes back, you know, it's got to be allocated again back to CPC buckets. So there's a, there's a lot that's going to have to be tracked.
And we went over that tonight, so we agree that that's exactly what has to happen. So once we get the report from Carla, it sounds like what we need to do is send that to you with a letter, with a report, saying, you know, this is what it looks like today as far as, you know, the two different buckets, the CPC Restricted Affordable Housing Bucket and then everything else. And I still think it's going to turn out to be all the first bucket. There may be nothing in any other bucket because we, there's been expenses been paid out of it that were legitimate, so I don't think the investment income is going to offset those, so I think it's probably all going to be in the CPC Restricted Bucket when we show this to you.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And then, you know, going forward, too, it'd be nice to advocate for, we do have two open seats on the CPC.
I mentioned that, too.
One is, or both have to do with housing, so it'd be great to have those filled that we could keep a good dialogue going and make it a lot smoother.
Yep, so I agree that we need to get that done, too, because there, I think there is a renewed emphasis on affordable housing, given how high house prices are in South Borough right now and the fact that we've got a, you know, senior population that's going to grow, 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 grow in the next few years. So I think we're all on the same page as far as trying to get some things done. So Freddie, before you say anything else from Select Board, as far as, so I think it's clear how to get the money moved over, okay? Okay, Freddie?
So I'll have to go through the minutes to see exactly what the vote was, but the other issue is to be sure that the Select Board, not Select Board, sorry, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and Shopsey is aware that any money spent from the CPA bucket that goes into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund has to be spent in compliance with the Community Preservation Act and that any property purchased has to have a deed restriction that goes with the land in perpetuity from day one. So you can't buy and then sell it. It has to have the deed restriction if you're going to sell it. Perpetuity goes with the land, and that's in the law, the legislation.
All right.
So that was a, if this was started today, what the CPC and Department of Revenue recommends is that you have a written agreement. These were done before, so that agreement's not in place, but the requirement is still there.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? So, thank you, Mr. Mills. Thank you, Shopsey. Come on up, Patty.
I'm not making any comment on the validity or the viability of the project. Could you explain why this is an acquisition of land and property by the town, and why is that not, why does that not need to be approved at town meeting as a two-thirds of?
Sam, you want to handle that one?
Excuse me, Ms. Fiori. The legislation that established the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and Committee actually allows for expenditure, purchase of real property out of the trust fund by the trust fund committee, basically, and not with town meeting. So that's specifically in the, I think it's Chapter 44, Section 55(c) Mass General Law.
Does the trust fund also include renovation costs, which I think historic said would be 300 to 500,000 dollars?
Well, again, the trust fund, you talk about a specific project. We don't have a specific, specific project in front of us now, but generally, I think those monies can be spent to create affordable housing, which would include potentially, you buy a property and it needs renovation, so you could pay for that out of the trust fund, I believe.
I'm just trying to understand whether the Affordable Housing Trust Fund purchases the house on behalf of the town, it is then not the taxpayers of the town who will be footing the bill to renovate the house on a property they weren't involved in the purchase of?
Yeah, effectively, because the taxpayers pay money into the CPC funds, and that CPC money comes into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, plus, in some ways, other money, but ultimately, the taxpayers are paying for that to create affordable housing, which many of us believe is a useful pursuit.
I understand that's a required allotment to CPC.
Right.
Saying, after the purchase, to do the renovation, are those additional costs also? Those will be coming from CPC and affordable housing?
Typically. For example, the house on Stockwell that we've recently, I guess, sold, had update work that had to be done on it, that came out of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So you've got to make it viable, livable, et cetera, for people to use, and those costs, again, are, I think, legitimate coming out of the trust fund.
Thank you. Anybody else on that one? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Dorian, you want to adjourn your meeting?
Motion to adjourn meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, Alex. You're muted. You can't give me a thumbs up. You have to put your volume on.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I approve.
So that's a yes. Okay, Doug?
Yes.
Okay, Tom?
Yes.
And Dorian is yes. Thank you very much.
I'm going to vote.
Oh, Andrew.
Sorry.
Sorry, Andrew. Thank you, guys.
I vote yes.
Yeah, sorry. I'm here on the Portis Dagman.
Okay, so I'm starting at consent agenda, A, B, C, D, and E. We're going to hold A to make a couple minor corrections to the minutes. B, C, D, E?
Hold.
Okay, so we're holding A and E. So a motion to approve consent agenda items B, C, and D.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, all right, let's do the minutes quickly. So Sam, you want to go?
Okay, Scrivners edit. Line 39 should be addressed instead of address.
Yep.
And that's it for me.
Andrew?
I have no edits. I wasn't going to mention this, but going forward, anytime where you have the dollar sign in front of a number, you don't have to say dollars after that. But I wasn't going to hold them up just for that, so just going forward.
We are a picky bunch, you know?
That's right.
Okay, all right. Lisa?
No.
Chelsea?
No.
All right, I just got a few. So let's see. This is substantive, so line 40, so it says, "He is prepared to withdraw his support for the IMA before the June 1 grant acceptance deadline." That's not the June 1 deadline. The June 1 deadline is the deadline in the IMA to withdraw, so that's not the grant. So we need to change that to say, "The June 1 deadline to withdraw per the IMA." Okay? She does such a great job of these minutes. On line 74, again, this is Scrivener for sure, "board" and to authorize instead of authorized, so not past tense, so authorize, no D. And that's it. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February 15 as amended.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, done. Okay, Lisa?
Thank you. I just wanted to take a second before we approve it and just thank the Labree Fellowship for their continued support that they provide to the town through their annual donations. And again, just to thank them and let them know how appreciated it is.
And Lisa, I'd second that Labree is not as deep pockets as some of the other educational institutions around town, so I think this is real money for them, and I, again, am grateful for the support that they provide.
All right, thank you. Okay, so moving on to other matters.
We vote...
Excuse me? Oh, sorry. Motion to accept the donation of $1,000 from the Fellowship?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, moving on, other matters.
Before we move on, could we just have a five-minute?
Yes, we can. Five-minute, five-minute recess. Five-minute recess. So, we're going to reconvene at 9:23. All right, we're on to other matters. So, the first thing is to talk about the water budget, Water Enterprise Fund budget, and hopefully take a vote on it. So, it goes in the board. Okay? All right, Chelsea, you want to lead this one?
Well, it's pretty cut and dry. Right. So, this is an enterprise fund, therefore not in the operating budget for the town. Doesn't come through the general fund. It's paid from our water bills. And I know that we have a proposal upcoming on changing our water bill rates, which we haven't implemented yet. So, this budget takes a change mid-year into consideration, I assume?
This, and I talked to color to make sure.
Okay.
So, this budget has nothing to do with the changes.
Okay.
That's revenue. This is expensive.
Yeah.
So, these are fixed. A million two that we've got to pay MWR. We've got the bill.
Okay.
She knows what it's going to be. So, this really doesn't have a lot to do with the proposed change in water rate structure that we will vote on in April.
Okay.
Okay.
So, this is, I mean, this is pretty basic with...
It is.
With paying for our water. And, you know, most of the employees that are in here are split between DPW, operating budget, and the water budget.
I mean, it's basically debt service salaries, and then the million two we pay the MWR. Everything else is truly peanuts as far as this goes.
Yeah.
And then we, and Brian does a computation to see what the benefit of all the work that the town does for the Water Enterprise Fund, and we transfer that. And that's $200,000, almost $50,000. That's in our other revenue already for the general fund. So, there's not a whole lot to debate here, I don't think.
And water usage was up, basically. So, our water cost is up.
Yeah.
And MWR water rates actually haven't been rising so much. It's a volume adjustment there, so pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Yep.
Anybody have any other comment?
Nope.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to support the budget for the Water Enterprise Fund for fiscal year '24. That is a total of $2,804,097.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, five-zero vote for that one. Okay, all right. Chelsea, update on regional dispatch?
Yeah. So, I'm going to give two updates as it relates to dispatch. And the first one is in your packet for the public. It's page 57 on the original packet that was posted. And the original intent to look at regional dispatch was actually not a financial reason. But through this process, there's been a lot of question around, what does this mean from a financial perspective? So, what I did was put together three scenarios. And just to be clear, there's been consensus amongst all the kind of parties that we've heard from and talked to that one dispatcher is not sufficient for this department. So, I did keep scenario one as continue with one dispatcher per shift, although we know that that's really not the direction that anybody wants to go. The second scenario is to double the department. Here, I just went with a straight double. Right now, with five full-time dispatchers, we do have some shifts that we do have two dispatchers on just because of the, how the schedules work out. But I didn't factor that into this analysis. I also did not factor in a, any supervision or department head into this. So, it's just a straight double. And with those two scenarios, they're, the assumptions are pretty similar. So, I assumed a 3% increase year-over-year, every year for all the line items in the operating budget, maintaining a $70,000 support and incentive grant. So, right now, we get a supportive, support and incentive grant every year, although we don't know that number at the beginning of the fiscal year. We didn't find out that number until October of this year. So, that is one that we're definitely concerned about, that number going away as more recs come throughout the state and the state not supporting individual PSAPS for the support and incentive grant. So, that number is built into the total cost of both assumption one and two, assuming that at some point it's going to go away. So, I just carried that straight through. The next assumption was $1 million. I think it's actually $950,000 for capital costs for the dispatch equipment in FY '29. That is just the, that is just the equipment in the dispatch centers. Does not include any radios outside of the dispatch center. And this, currently, the town meeting has authority over this budget. So, I know that's been raised as well. So, those are the assumptions for scenario one and two. The third scenario is related to going into a rec with the two towns that we've identified of Grafton and, Grafton and Westboro. So, some different assumptions here. I carried a 16% assessment for Southboro, which is made up of, as we discussed before, 50% of the population and 50% of call volume. We understand that there could be fluctuation with that year-to-year, but I just assume 16% for now. A go-live of July 1st, 2025. I did a 4% year-over-year increase to present a more conservative view, assuming that costs could be different on the town side versus a rec side. So, I just did a higher percentage there. The transition grant for costs leading up to go-live. So, the transition grant is what we have, what we applied for last week with the other two towns. So, that would cover the cost of outfitting the building that is being proposed. So, that will not be a cost for the town. And it would pay for the salary of an executive director. So, that transition grant is just available to municipalities who are going in to a rec or some other form of that. The next assumption is that there would be a 0%, sorry, a $0 assessment for the first three years, and 50% for year four, and 75% for year five. So, that is, would then start July 1st of 2025, which is why if you look at total rec in FY '26, which would be July 1st of 2025, it's $175,000, which I'll get to in a second. The lease payment is unknown at this time, but it will need to be added into this scenario. I had a number in there, and then I really don't know what the number's going to be. So, I just took it out completely. But that will, that will increase the number on the total rec. There are no capital costs in this scenario for two reasons. One is all the capital will be part of the transition grant to get the rec stood up. So, there will be no, no cost to the town to get the rec up and going. There are more grant opportunities for recs that don't exist for PSAPS. And when I say PSAPS, that's an individual dispatch center at an individual town, which is what we have today. But recs, you can apply for capital. So, let's say that we, in scenario one and two, had FY '29 for $1 million, and we were in a rec, we could apply for a grant for that and not have a cost. So, there is, there is an upside for the amount of grants that we can apply for. I included $175,000, starting in FY '26, to account for staffing the station so that it does not go dark. So, that was, that's a big concern that I've heard from a lot of residents. I know this board has discussed it. The chiefs have discussed it, that, you know, that, that we do not want to create a public safety issue in our public safety building. So, I just put that number in there. I essentially said, okay, $100,000 to staff it and three sets of benefits. I don't know where it's going to come out at, but at least it's something that we can work with. And then the, the last assumption here is town meeting does not have the authority over the assessment amount, which is the operating cost for this. And I'll remind you that in the IMA, the Southboro has a carve-out that we negotiated that our member of the Board of Directors will either be a representative of the select board or their representative. So, that was a concern, was that there would be no resident representation over this amount. So, Southboro is the only town that has that setup. We do get an equal vote on every committee that we have set up in the IMA. So, that's the Board of Directors, the Operations Committee, and the Finance Committee. And on the Board of Directors, it's one representative from each committee. Again, that will be somebody on this board or they're designated. So, the grid below, I know it's tiny, but I tried to fit 10 years in. So, I had the total cost for current dispatch, total cost for dispatch doubled, and then the total rec, and then the incremental cost to maintain Southboro to get two dispatchers, and then the incremental cost to maintain in Southboro compared, with two dispatchers compared to a rec. So, if you go, and this does not include any capital expenses that we know if we stay in Southboro, we're going to have to do. We're looking at, in FY '33, an incremental cost to have two dispatchers compared to a rec at $1 million additional per year in operating costs. So, I'm going to stop there because I just said a lot.
You did, but good job. So, do you want to take questions right now?
I'm happy to stop and take questions if there's questions on this piece specifically.
Okay. Andrew?
You know, there's, there's assumptions that are made, but I think they're fair assumptions. And it illustrates this point, which you can pretty clearly see from the numbers.
Question about the startup cost here. Chelsea, you'd mentioned that one of the capital items did not include radios.
Yeah.
And just, just to be sure that they're going to have to build a communications tower at the rec site there, and that's all part of the initial funding and...
So, maybe I confused you. So, when I said there weren't radios included, there, in assumption, sorry, in scenarios one and two, the $1 million of capital that we have in FY '29 does not include radios. It's just the equipment in the dispatch center. So, that's if we were in Southboro.
Okay.
The assumption, the, the goal of the grant is that any capital equipment that is required to go live with the rec will be included in the grant.
Including the radio tower that's going to have to go...
Correct. Yeah, and that will be onsite.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good. And the other comment I'd make is that one of my original concerns, and people have raised it with me and I'm sure others, is that this is an unusual financial structure where town meeting actually doesn't have the ability to...
Correct.
...weigh in on this, in fact, disapprove expenditures, which is, as I read it, that's a part of the state law relative to recs.
It is.
So, it'd be hard to dodge that. On the other hand, the original version of this had, I think it was a 10-year deal that we couldn't get...
Five.
Five-year that we couldn't get out of.
Yep.
The current structure gives us a nine-month notice...
Six.
It's going to be six months to get out. So, in fact, the way I read that, the worst case is we might get stuck for a year with something that we thought was egregious. But in fact, at that point, we would have the option to be able, and we'd have to find another rec to join...
Correct.
Because we can't go back once we go through this door.
Mm-hmm.
But at least it gives us some flexibility to adjust to something that we think is just terribly unreasonable. So, I mean, I'm not, I'd rather have, again, town meeting approval in here, but I don't think we're going to get that if we do the rec. So, I'm, I guess, okay, but not all that delighted by the structure. But it gives us some protection here at least.
Yeah. So, I, I think that's a good point, Sam, and I'm glad you said that because that was on my list in my head to address. And I think you addressed it very well. I would also add that I think with the concerns that have been brought up to this board, we actually have a bigger exposure liability, whatever you want to call it, with doing nothing. And, and I, I think to give up a little bit of control from town meeting to do this would make, takes a big liability off the town. I think that there's a lot of things that could happen if we don't do anything. And I think the price ticket on that is, is probably not good, but it's also, I think, a safety concern for me.
And I agree 100%. I think that, for me, the issue is if you've got a very complex emergency, that's where you need the backup capability that rec provides. And in fact, it's my view that it's very likely, if the emergency is very complex, much more likely there's potential loss of life...
Correct.
...in those situations. And so, to have the insurance here, basically, that you've got backup capability to get two, three, four, however many dispatchers, to be able to respond to something like that is worth a lot as far as not only liability, but simply saving lives. And so, that, to me, is a substantial trade-off as well. So, thank you.
Lisa?
Thank you. And Sam, actually, I was going to touch on that very point. You know, knowing that we potentially have a liability and, you know, I'm actually going to take it a little bit a step further. I'm going to throw a scenario out there for, for people to consider as well, that, you know, a lot is asked of our one dispatcher that we have on. I, I think they do a tremendous job with what we've provided them. And if you have a scenario where someone potentially calls and somebody may be having a heart attack, something that may or may not need some form of CPR, and if the person on the phone doesn't know how to do CPR, but then another, as we've seen a lot that has happened in the past, you may get another call come in, whether it be a fire, whether it be a car accident or whatever, instead of, and I, we saw this through the Foxborough Rec Center as well, the dispatcher has a job to do for both calls. And I worry... And I worry that instead of giving CPR instructions or keeping a parent calm on the phone, you know, our dispatchers have, their focus is so split. So I think the model we have now certainly doesn't work. I think this addresses, for me, some of those safety concerns. I think instead of putting somebody on the phone on hold so calls can be dispatched and tones can be put out and whatnot. And again, for me, we saw it, I have a scanner. So it was, a lot went on the day that we had the house fire on Sears Road. And then we had, call it a microburst, whatever you want to call it, came through and knocked power lines down. Then there was also a fire out off of Meadow Road. I mean, there was so much going on, and I think we were fortunate that it happened in between shifts. So we had actually two dispatchers on. I can't imagine the, putting this on one person to try to do all that. And so this is kind of why I, I think it's important. We either have to make a decision to do this or we're going to have to make some big changes within and provide the training that's needed. One of the things, as I touched on when we went to Foxborough, a call came in when I was there. And the initial dispatcher stayed on the phone with the person. They never hung up. They had a constant communication with this person that was in some level of crisis. Another dispatcher walked over, saw what was going on, immediately got on the phone and dispatched who they needed to. So it's redundancy and it's almost a tag-team event. Or if a third incident had happened, there would have been another coverage. And again, you're never losing that initial communication that you have, that, that somebody's calling you in distress. So whether this is the way that, that we decide to go or not, we, we have some serious changes. And I think these numbers reflect what we would have to do to get us to where we would need to be. So, thank you.
Good job, Chelsea. This is extremely helpful as far as the numbers go. A million dollars is a lot of money as far as year after year, my goodness. And we didn't do this because of money. We did it because Chief Achilles made a very strong case that the status quo could not continue. So I would go a little bit further than what Lisa said, which is what if you had something really horrible and you just really needed a lot of dispatchers because you had, you know, it could. You know, I don't want to even go any further than that because it's scary to think about. But remember, all five of us agree, we're sold on regionalization. So let's make that, continue to make it clear. We believe it's the way to go, right? We've done a whole lot of work to try to get this structured in a way we think is a really good structure. We've made huge progress on this. I just have a few things that I hope we get done before June 1st, the lease. We're going to have the DEP in, we hope, on the 21st. So I think we can pick my concerns off and at a time. Mine was just a timing thing. I thought that we were going a little bit fast because of the grant. But I'm totally sold with this. Because of what we get and the fact that we're going to save a lot of money, that's great too. But that's not why we went into it and we should make that clear. But what you just said, you said so clear, you said so well. And I think you'll have to say it again at Town Meeting, which is, if it's, I'm still surprised it's the case, but if truly you have no ability to change the structure as far as the governance of the, of the rec goes, you just can't go any further than what we've gone, right? So you, you deal with Mr. Butler's argument, Mr. Hamilton's argument, as far as we've never done this before, we, Town Meeting should have total control over this. You know, it is what it is. If you really can't, then I think you just, all you got to do is say what you said there. And remember, this is advisory as far as, so we come back, we meet a few more times, and then we'll make a final decision whether to stick with it, you know, beyond June 1st. That's, that's what we do. I mean, we've got one more shot at this if we think that we haven't thought through this and we really need to more times. So it looks to me like you've done a great job. I don't know why you need to do much more at this point as far as getting ready for Town Meeting. I think you're done as far as what you've done here. And you should be able to answer all questions.
Okay, so we're going to...
Keep going.
The numbers, please, and then we'll talk, we'll talk about EPA.
Okay, good.
So second update related to this is Sam and I attended an EPA, oh, and Mr. Purple too, and the chiefs, and the conservation agent, and the Board of Health, Assistant Health Director. So we were Southborough heavy on that meeting.
Health nurse, right? Taylor was it?
She's the Assistant Health Director as well, yes. So EPA, DEP, and the LSP were present for that meeting. I found it extremely informative. I think Sam did as well. So the, the goal is to have DEP and EPA at hopefully the March 21st meeting. I've asked them to attend that, so I'm just waiting to hear back. If not, I'm hoping to schedule another time for them to come talk to us. But two of the gentlemen that were on the call have been on this project for 25 and 30 years. So they are very familiar with the site. They've been working on this for a long time. And I just want to point out a few things that, that we asked, that we had heard from residents, and I'll let Sam chime in on what I missed. But one of the concerns was around the five-year reports that are done by EPA and that the, it sounded like the fifth out of five was due in 2024, I think. Those will continue in perpetuity every five years. So they will still be doing testing of the site and making sure that it's, that it's still in compliance. They emphasized that they, that the remediation that was done at the site was for human health and not just environmental health, so that it would be okay for humans to be on the site. They also explained that the contaminant that was found in the ground was, is heavier than water. So it is actually 100 to 130 feet below the ground right now. And that in order to be exposed to, or in order to have a health impact from the contaminant, you have to ingest it or have skin contact. So they were pretty confident that, that, at that low grade, especially if we're not doing excavation at the site, which we would not be doing for this building, that that was not of concern. The lagoon is capped. I don't know the answer, Bonnie, to how, when that was capped, off the top of my head, but we can certainly find that out. But I think those were the highlights for me. Sam, I'll let you fill in.
Yep. Again, it was helpful to, to be able to talk to the folks who've been with the project for an extended period of time. And the other thing that I was, again, obviously concerned about some of the reports I'd seen, but it was helpful to understand the time sequence here in the sense that the five-year reviews seem to be very stable at this point and moving in the right direction. So it's not as if it were sort of vibrating all over the place in terms of one, one report was great, the other one was terrible, et cetera. It's all on a trend as they expect it for a site that is under control. And I found that very, very good news. So obviously, no guarantees on these kinds of things, but things seem to be behaving as they are expected to behave. And the LSPs were saying about, there are other towns who have similar issues that have built buildings, public buildings on those sites. And they, again, have been operating for a reasonable period of time with no difficulties related to those that can be determined at least. So it's not like we would be doing, be the first ones to ever do something like this with this kind of site. But, you know, again, there's always some risk in almost anything you do. And I think the, the goal is to continue to monitor and see what happens there. So I, I felt better about my concerns, certainly, after listening to these folks. And it'd be good to get them in here for a meeting to have us and the public ask questions about their experience with this process. Thank you.
Good job. Okay, moving on. Next one is, excuse me, come on up, Bonnie. Yeah, come on up. Because we won't, nobody will hear you if you stay back there.
I don't have your worksheet. The, since you've identified an issue, an ongoing issue as a liability, what are you doing about it for this year's Town Meeting? To add personnel?
There is no, there, there is nothing to add personnel right now.
So whatever the issue might be that you are discussing or concerned about, you're actually not taking any action on it?
Continue with the existing risk, yeah.
Well, that's why we're doing this.
But this isn't going to open for another three years?
No, it's not. We understand that, so.
All right, and then if the EPA is going to come in, I'd really like to know what the distance between the building, which I've scaled it, and the landfill. The distance between that, and I'd like them to show the floodplain of the 100-year. The new FEMA maps have just come out. And I know they're doing a geological test, a ground test for this site into the bedrock, so I'd like to know what they, that's part of the construction cost. So once you start this project and use a single dime, you're committed to this project.
We did talk about the building a little bit at a meeting I attended.
I couldn't wait for a public question, but I, I think it's really important to find, that we know how far this building is from that lagoon. Excuse me, from the landfill and from Kettle Pond that's also on there and the wells that are still going to be active near that building for testing. Because there are some now. You can see them when you take a photo.
Okay, good.
Oh, is, the public safety dispatches covered under 111F of fire and police presumptive illnesses?
Yeah, I'm not sure if dispatches are covered under, under police and fire.
Can we, can we find out?
I'll check with the towns insurance. I'll see what they're to find out how we can do that.
Okay.
Which will, which will be the district's issue in terms of insurance for that staff, yeah. Which will cost the towns through the allocations.
If you have a lease and the town of Westboro owns the property, you have to have something to protect the town on that lease that we do not have a liability for that, for that site at all.
We agree.
And we should have a...
That's how, you want to see the lease? Okay. All right. Next item is St. Mark's MOU. So when we met last, we needed to do, we needed to do possibly two more things to this before we really were ready to sign. So the first thing was the planning board had asked to talk to Town Council and clarify that last sentence in paragraph three, which is a sentence that says, "To facilitate the provisions of this paragraph, the schools shall apply for any required planning board or other municipal approval, or alternatively, provide notice that such approval is not required by no later than 60 days following the approval and shall diligently pursue such application upon filing." So that's the sentence that they didn't really understand why it was in there. And Ms. Latrell had said to me, because I'd said, we didn't put that in there, St. Mark's Council did. They, they did put this paragraph in there, but she was right. Jay did add that sentence. So we had a Zoom with Ms. Latrell and Jesse Stein last Friday with Jay, and he explained very clearly why this is in here. And I believe they left that Zoom very satisfied as to the reasons in there and clarified as to why it was in there. So that was my impression. And I haven't talked to either one since then, but they definitely seemed to be fine with the explanation that was given them as far as what's in there.
I talked with Ms. Latrell, and she said she was satisfied.
Okay, all right. Okay, then the second one, our own Mr. Dennyton wanted a few changes. And since then, he has, he and I have talked, Jay and I have talked, and probably you and Jay have talked?
Yeah.
Okay, you want to take it from there?
Yeah, just following up on the discussion that we had about this last time, I had some ideas for how to make the language more kind of consistent from paragraph to paragraph to just reiterate the fact that it is indeed the intent of this, that it supersedes the prior or currently existing reciprocal license agreement. And it's really just a matter of kind of wordsmithing. But I'm satisfied that the intent of this agreement is clear, that after we sign this, as it's reflected in the recitals, that the terms of that prior reciprocal license agreement are supplanted by the terms of the agreement that we've got in front of us. So I'm satisfied with the draft that we have right now and am prepared to move forward on it.
Anyone else have any comment on the MOU in front of us before we vote to approve it? Okay, this has taken a while, but I think it's in good shape. Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of purchase and sale of real estate that we have in front of us that has already been signed by St. Mark's School.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Hi, hi. Okay, so we're going to execute that before we leave tonight. I mean, we'll, it says February 1st, we'll mark it, put March. Okay, all right, agreed? All right, progress. Okay, so let's go to the warrant now.
I'm sure Mr. Purple's going to be glad when this goes to the printer.
I'm not sure what else you're going to do to it.
All right, so I've got a cheat sheet in front of me. I'm not sure if you guys do, that looks like this, that shows all the articles and the votes we've taken. So there's several things we've got to do tonight before we sign this. There's some votes we can take, and we've got to discuss a couple of them. So let me start with Reykjavik Hill remediation. When we were here last week, we were concerned about the timing. It came so fast. We wanted to consider postponing this until the fall Town Meeting. So since then, we've had a couple of conversations with Melissa Danza, who has in turn talked to Liz Leiden at Town Council. And the conclusion is that the recommendation from Liz is we should not try to postpone this. This was agreed to with the state as far as we're going to bring it forward. The concept of force majeure, act of God, would not apply if we just move it to fall, so we'd be subject to penalties for not getting things done. I mean, it's, it's almost doable if you move it, but if anything goes wrong, we have a bad winter and the ground's frozen, they can't, I mean, they're going to be digging and moving a whole lot of dirt, right? So you've got to do it. So it might expose us to penalties if we wait. So Melissa is very concerned, Liz is very concerned. Now, if it doesn't pass the Town Meeting, then we can bring it back up in fall and there's no penalties. That would be considered. I don't know why that's called an act of God, but it is. So it would be one that's outside our control, I guess, is the way you look at it. So we could bring it back up in the fall. So I, you know, we just haven't talked about this very much. We're going to have to probably figure who's going to get up, at least give a brief explanation of this for those at Town Meeting that have no idea what we're talking about here. But that was the recommendation from our Town Council and from Melissa Danza is to not try to postpone this.
I think we got to do it, so might as well go ahead and get started.
Madam Chair, just one other item is that Attorney Leiden did speak with her counterpart at DEP today, who essentially confirmed everything that, that Ms. Danza had said. So again, the upper limit of what this could be is about $2.2 million. It's not known, it's kind of like I, and I used this example earlier, it's kind of like getting an allowance for ledge. This is what you think is there from some of the borings you did. You kind of have an idea where it is, but you really don't have any idea how much there is until you start digging. And so we understand the limits of the waste, we don't understand the depth. And so if it's better than we think, you know, that number is going to be significantly lower. But the LSP feels that that is going to be the upper end. The LSP is planning to be at Town Meeting and will be available to help answer any questions that do come up with this.
So take a look at the wording of Article 9. It doesn't say up to, it says any other amount. I don't know, I don't know that I'd vote for that. So I think we've got to change the, what it says there and say up to. I mean, look what it says, or any other amount. Make it up, $10 million. So I, I think that's probably not palatable to some people. I mean, it wouldn't be to me. Andrew?
I, Mr. Purple, you've got to, it seems like you have a thought on this.
Mouth's open, it's just not moving, right? So I'm, I'm not sure, I'd have to check about the wording "up to." So...
Well, then leave it at "to appropriate, 2.2," or "no more than 2.2." But it's the, or any other amount that I think is a...
Well, this is, it was prepared by bond counsel. That's why the wording is in there as prepared by bond counsel. So that's why it's, it's there.
It's the same in Article 8.
Same, same saying language for the radios.
I mean, what's the point of putting the number there if you're going to say, or any other amount? I don't, I didn't see that one.
It gives you the latitude of changing that at Town Meeting.
But I agree, Mark. I, I think, as Kathy said, you, any other amount could be $10 million and...
So you would like, so for eight and nine, you'd like to see those four words out?
Or you could put, or any lesser amount.
Well, up to does that, so it's...
Bond counsel would...
So, why don't you ask bond counsel, well, we can't say "up to." I mean, the whole purpose of town meeting voting this is to basically set the parameters here. When you say "any other amount," you just kind of...
Basically take your cap off, there's no cap.
Yeah, really.
Yep.
I mean, the article is essentially the notice. The motion is where, is what people are going to be voting on. So, the motion is not going to be, I don't want to say wishy-washy, but it's not going to be so broad, it's going to be specific.
Well, it needs to be, I agree, but I still wouldn't put those words in there to even have the question raised, you know, "What do you mean, any other amount?"
So, let me see about getting those out, that, or "any other amount."
Or, or maybe any lesser amount in the warrant, and then you could mess with the language at town meeting if you need to.
Okay.
Everybody agree on those two? Okay. So, I'm glad you saw that, I didn't see, see it in Article eight. Okay. So, you'll just update us tomorrow as to what you did?
Yes.
Okay. On those two? Okay. Chelsea?
Yeah.
Jay was concerned last night about the tree maintenance fund, and I'm not...
Sorry, do you want to take a position on nine?
We're going to, we're going to come back and vote.
Oh, okay.
I was trying to get the question, there's, there's a couple of things we've got to get out of the way.
So, I have an update. So, I heard that.
Okay.
So, this will be an article for tree maintenance. So, it, it, it's a regular article that will roll over year to year, if not split.
So, like facilities maintenance kind of thing?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the example I gave last night, and I still got met with questionable looks. I gave, I did that one, I did the insurance deductible, I did the replenishing, the sick pay when people leave, and he still had concerns.
So, this, this will be like the article that we did in the fall from the overlay?
What's wrong with it now, the way it's written?
This is updated language, actually, today, so there should not be anything wrong with it. Is that correct, Mr. Purple?
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, Mr. Haggerty is raising his hand, so maybe I'm incorrect.
Okay.
Jim Haggerty, Town Clerk, I wonder if the article has to state the source of the funds, where it's going to come out of? Remember we were going to the town meeting?
So, the motion will have to state it, but right now it's raising appropriate or transfer from available funds.
Agreed.
And my understanding is that there's still some discussion as to the sum, which is why it's a sum of money, so...
Yep.
Yep.
But are we going to put a number in there, or are we going to just get the fund started and then fund it in the fall when we know more about the budget? I don't understand.
So, so what we're trying to figure out is, with the article that we did in the fall, there was 100 of overlay money and 50 of ARPA, right? That wasn't really, the 50 wasn't in the article, but that's ARPA. So, ARPA they've spent down first, because we know that there's timing with that sum of money. And then what Carla and the DPW are working on is identifying if there are items that are outside of the actual tree contract that was signed, if there's other items that can be paid out of the DPW operation budget for FY '23 and free up some of the overlay money, that we would then transfer, or we would appropriate that money to this article, because that money doesn't expire, right, like the ARPA money does? And the FY '23 budget, you have to spend by the end of the year. So, they're trying to figure out what they need in that line item for the end of the year, so that we don't have to raise taxes in order to do this. Now, the flip side to that is Brian came back to us today and said, "Asabat was 30,000 less than what we expected." So, in theory, you could just, you know, keep the 5.99% and do 30,000 out of taxes. I was trying to do it so that we don't raise the taxes.
So, now this makes sense, because Carla asked me today for what I knew about what the total cost was. So, I sent, Chris Leroy sent me a really detailed, including the details. So, it's 140 is what he said, the total cost he's asked me, including details. So, is the detail that you're trying to move out into the operating budget?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so you're going to come up with a number at some point that Carla and Brian agree on that...
And DPW, because they're the ones that have to manage that 85,000 in the operations budget. So, I think that's the direction that we wanted to go to. Now, the, the other part of that is for our, our section E on the earmarks is, is this one that we could go to Representative Donahue on for funding, you know, new, new tree? Now, the, the first thing that needs to happen is we need to complete the inventory of trees. So, I talked to Mimi today. So, Mimi, Chris and Chris Leroy agree with all this language, by the way. So, I worked with them, we had a few tweaks, it, so both are on the same page. But the first thing that needs to be done is the inventory of trees and then the study. So, and then new trees will get, be able to get planted, because you need to know what you have and where you're going to go, and then what, and then you get the new trees, right? So, that was another idea.
But this is not, I mean, again, you can do both, you could, I don't know how fast we hear about earmarks. I assume that by June 30th, we'd hear about the earmarks, but I don't know that, it's when fiscal year is up for the state. So, I don't know what the earmark she's asking for, what period they apply to. So, we won't hear by town meeting, let me, let me fill that out.
That's fair. Yep. Yep.
Okay, so, remember, we've got to follow town meeting. So, why don't you just put something small in there and then we will...
Well, I'm trying to at least squeeze out what I can out of the overlay, right? And then, I mean, this, this, I'm not going to be sitting here to shepherd this along either, so I'm just, I'm just trying to do what I can to at least get it going.
So, let's get a number in there, probably get it started.
Yeah.
And then, I, I'd rather not take back the 30 that we got from Asabat, because it's not 30, you've got the 11 that the schools added to it, the other schools. So, I think it's probably a net of 19 when you put it all together, I mean. But whatever, leave it alone. Let's, let's, let's take that, get that budget, right? Keep it, keep that savings, and just find a way from what you just said to put a number in.
I'm trying. Yep.
And then we'll put, you know, in the fall, we'll know better about what the valuations are. We're going to have a better idea of how close we are to the valuations for 1123 and really know where we're going to end up, so we can add more to it soon.
And that was on my earmark list as well.
All right, so let's, okay, that's...
Okay. I mean, I think if, you know, even if it's an earmark for new trees and we can get the inventory and study done, at least, you know, we'll get going on it, so.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, so now, let's go back. Does anybody have any other issues as far as articles? We're going to go back and vote on, we've got some more we can vote on now, but I think that those were the issues with articles. Anybody have anything else they want to talk about as far as an article itself, before we go back? Okay. So, Mark, correct me if I do anything wrong here as far as which ones we think we can vote on. Okay, so the first one I think we can vote on, we just did the water budget. The next one would be the Breakneck Hill remediation, we haven't voted on that, we've talked about it tonight, we now know we are going to bring it forward. So, I'll make a motion to support the borrowing for remediation of Breakneck Hill.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? All right, so five zero on that one. Okay. Next one would be the two that are related to St. Mark's, 12 and 13. So, 12 is the land swap, 13 is the funding of the park. So, I don't see why we're not ready to vote on those two. We've approved the MOU tonight, right? Okay, we're going to talk also before we leave tonight about reports and what presentations, but we're just trying to get the votes in now, so I can put those in the warrant for tomorrow. Okay, so I'll make a motion to support both Articles 12 and 13 related to the park.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, so those two are five oh, Mark. Okay, next one would be the, still, let's see, so what we've listed right now is Article 24, which is the CPA article to pay for the tennis court, basketball courts, pickleball courts, okay? Which we talked about. Any further discussion on that one? Okay, so a motion to approve the CPA article that will fund the cost of rehabilitating those courts.
Second.
All in favor?
That will be Article 13.
Yes, it will be moved up, so I said...
14, rather.
Yep, it would be 14. Okay. Okay, next one would be the tree maintenance fund that we just talked about. So, we ready to vote on that one? Okay, yes?
Yeah.
All right, so I, I make a motion to approve the tree maintenance fund, which right now is listed as Article 28.
Second.
All in favor? All right, that one's done. Okay, now, let's see, what else are we missing, Mark?
SAP.
Which one?
SAP, the personal.
Oh, SAP, yeah, I forgot that one. Okay. Is everybody ready to vote on SAP? Okay. All right, so somebody else make a motion.
I move that the town, that the select board support at town meeting the SAP warrant article.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Five zero. Okay, now, Mark, are we down to citizens petitions at this point as far as what we can do?
I believe so.
Oh, no, no, Hawkington IMA, we got that one. Okay, so, remember, the Hawkington IMA article is to basically ask the town to approve the cost of the outside independent engineering audit of the plans to be reimbursed by Hawkington, and that's in the IMA, to, to be clear, that they will reimburse that, up to $200,000. We have checked with Tim Teese of PAR, and he agrees that's plenty of money to do the audit, so we, we think we're fine as far as having enough money in there to do it. Okay? Any further questions on that one? You look quizzical.
Do we, do we know, do we have a map of the roads yet?
We will have. So, we're going to talk about presentations in a second, so I'll go over that during that. Okay, so the information to let town meeting know what roads will be affected will absolutely be presented.
Okay.
That was, that was my concern as well, Kathy, the impact to the roads and to the citizens for the work that's going to be done on that. So, it would be good to have those.
Yeah. So, just to repeat what the terms of the deal are, Hawkington pays for all of the upgrades as designed by PAR, Oak Hill, all the roadwork, and they have to totally redo the roads. It's not just the half that they put the pipes down, so they have to renovate the roads, they have to re-surface all the roads, et cetera. So, the entire cost of what has to be done to be able to accommodate their water flow is being paid for by Hawkington. On top of that, they are going to give us a million dollars to be used against other water projects that we determine, they're not going to be listed in the IMAs, it's got to be for water projects. And if you remember, before Karen left, she gave us a list of future projects, and three of them totaled about $860,000. But we're still not obligated to use it for those, we're obligated to use it for some type of water project. So, we've got that in there.
Kathy, I, I would urge us to go into some detail about what those other projects are, at least conceptually, so the town meeting gets a good sense of the kind of things we're thinking about doing, at least, with that additional money to improve the quality of the water system in town.
They will reimburse us for the cost of delivering the water. Remember, MWRA is going to bill them directly for the water, so that, you know, we don't bill them for it, the MWAs or whatever they use, there's going to be a meter between the two talents that shows what they use. And then, there's quite an elaborate spreadsheet that's going to determine, you know, how to determine what they owe us for electricity, for loss of water, there's always a little drippage between when it comes out. So, it's very precise spreadsheet, let me just say this, as far as determining that, they've agreed with that, so...
And wear and tear on the system.
Wear and tear, that's part of it too, that's part of it too. It's a, I, I think it's all-inclusive.
Is this edge to edge paving for the roads that they...
Yes.
Okay, so, and what about if there's a sidewalk on that road? Does that include the sidewalk?
I'm not going to be able to answer that specifically. It may be in there, but I don't remember if sidewalks are in there, it should be. They're really supposed to, you know, put it back like it was completely and not just do the half that they're, they're working on, so it should be in there.
Kathy, when do you think that we're going to have some of this information? I mean, obviously before town meeting, but I'm just...
I think you'll have the proposed presentation in the next few days to take a look at it. Then on the 21st, I think you'll see the proposed IMA for the first time again. We're not going to sign it before town meeting, we just want to be able to tell town meeting that the major terms are totally agreed upon, so they understand what those are, that, that is the plan.
So, I would prefer to hold off taking a position on this till we have the information that's going to be in the presentation, just so the public can see it and they can feel, they can be part of the discussion. I'm not saying I don't support it, I just would ask that we not take a position on this tonight till we have all of the documentation.
I am, and I have another question, one.
Okay, go ahead.
So, the 200,000, we're raising taxes to pay the 200,000?
No.
Okay, so how is that, can you explain the mechanics of that?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
It's coming out of the Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings, so it's going to be in and out, it's literally a dividend credit, so it comes right back in, so you immediately, you pay the bill. We, you know, if you're doing an audit, you want to do the contracting, it's your audit, you want to control it, you want to set the terms, because they're working for you. They immediately reimburse it, so it's going to be, Carla has signed off on this, because that's what the article says, okay, to be funded.
So, there won't be, there won't be a timing issue with our retained earnings dipping, and, and just to be clear, we're not raising taxes, because I don't want people to think that the 200,000 is included in their tax file. Okay.
Okay, so we'll wait till, we'll talk about it again 21st and then decide to vote that night, or wait until town meeting, okay? All right. Okay, so, so other than citizens petitions, I think we're done as far as what we can do for the warrant.
Correct, so the ones that you don't take positions on tonight, they will say at town meeting in the...
Right. And it doesn't mean we can't vote on the 21st or at the meeting...
Just the printed warrant.
That's right, because it will get on the screen if we vote it, we've got two times to vote, 21st and right before the meeting, right? We've got a room set aside to, to be able to finish our business.
So, I have a semantics question, just so I don't forget. When the board has voted on these issues, the board has taken a vote to support on the ones that you've not supported, so to speak, the vote to support and seconded, and then it's a 0-5-0. It's a little convoluted, but I am, do you want to show support, 0-5-0? Do you want to show not support? Because if I show not support, I've got to flip the vote. But the vote was to support and not, so I'm just trying to be consistent, because again, the individual slides that are going to be put up, and we had this issue where someone questioned whether, that, that it really didn't reflect properly. I want to get this out of the way now, so when we start preparing the slides for town meeting, it's reflected the way you want to see it.
That's an interesting question. Everybody understand what he's saying?
Yeah.
All right.
If you put the vote in and perenns, that is not support for the ones that didn't support.
Well, I think it's much clearer if you say, you know, it's white, so you say no, I think, and then that would be 5-0.
So, if it's not support, I've just got to flip the vote.
Yeah.
But I'd...
Mr. Semino has his hand raised, so...
I think, yes, 0-5 is really confusing.
But that's not the way we made the motions, though, typically.
Correct, so I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be accurate, but I also don't want to be confusing where somebody sitting there looking at it says, "Well, it says support," and then you've got to explain, "Yeah, but the vote..."
Are you bringing Paul over?
Mayan?
Yes, you are.
Yep.
Welcome.
So, thank you. My preference is to show, look, the, the, the fact or the label is either support or non-support, assuming no ties, okay?[1697.02] So, my preference is that we say support or non-support, and then the, I don't think the motion that you guys vote on at your meeting tonight is relevant to that little piece of information on the slide at town meeting, meaning it's not literally relevant. Obviously, the vote is relevant, but I think the idea is support, and then 5-0, or 4-0-1, or 3-2, whatever the case may be, and if it's not support, then flip the numbers.
Okay, so Paul, just to be clear, if it's not support, and it was unanimous not support, you think it should say 0-5 or 5-0?
Yes.
0-5?
Yes.
You mean, that says not support, okay, so he's not.
Yeah, if the motion is not to support, and you vote 5-0 not to support, I prefer the slide at town meeting says not support, 0-5, that way the magnitude of the numbers only goes in one direction regardless.
Yeah, Paul, I think, yeah, I think you've got to, you're picking, you're picking both ways there, so you've got to pick one or the other.
The motion was to support, and then 0-5-0, for example, so you could say not support.
Hold on, hold on, if the motion was to support, who made a motion to support that lost 5-0?
That's the way we did most of them.
That was the way, that was the way the motions were all done, is to support and seconded, and then if the board did not support, it was all unanimous, all votes have been unanimous so far, it was 0-5-0.
Okay, so I wasn't, I didn't quite catch that as you guys were making those motions, that they were all in the affirmative, even if you knew you were going the other way. However, I still come back to my original point, which is that the little note on the slide is just to convey the best, clearest information to the voters, not necessarily to mimic or reflect your meeting tonight. That's the distinction I'm trying to make.
So, we could say not support, and then 0-5-0.
Which indicates that all five of you didn't support, yes.
And Mark thinks that's confusing, but I will say this, it's got to say support, not support, it should not say support, 0-5. That's really confusing, so.
So, they've all been unanimous that will be printed in the warrant, so why don't we do not support unanimous?
We can.
I mean, I'm fine with that, too.
We're thinking about the slide, that's what people are really going to be looking, right, what do we want on that slide?
The information from the slide is derived from here.
I know.
So, that's why I just want to make sure, okay?
And then if it's not, then it's going to be a split vote, and we haven't had any.
Well, we hadn't had any of those.
No, I know, I know, but they're talking about the slides.
It won't be in the warrant here, anyway, so.
So, maybe it's not an issue if you don't use the numbers, since they've all been unanimous.
Correct, yes.
Fine.
And, you know, Paul will say advisory, what's your position, select board, what's your position, so we'll reiterate it verbally, too.
I don't always do that, especially if it's unanimous, one way or the other. Certainly, if anybody on this board, or any other advisory, or anybody else, wants to make their position, you know, wants to reiterate, certainly can, you could certainly do that.
Okay, enough?
Yes. Yep, good, thank you.
All right, so now, we've got the, we're down to 10 citizens petitions, given Mr. Perry is going to indefinitely postpone his zoning articles, we've got 10, we've already voted on two of them, we voted on 43 and 44 related to the park, we voted unanimously to not support those two. We have eight others we could take a vote on tonight if we wanted to, or we could wait to town meeting. Do it tonight?
Let's vote.
Wait until town meeting? All right, okay, so let's start at the top. The article to reduce the voting age in Southborough from 18 to 17.
You want to, you want to have a motion, or have a discussion, or?
Well, I just said, that's the one, so yes, a motion to support Article 34 as we have in front of us tonight.
Second.
Any further discussion of that one?
So, I was just going to, I was just going to say, I, just thinking about what James presented, and the timing of kids going to college, and the, I think this creates an advantage for, and I call them kids, late high schoolers going into college, the opportunity to register to vote before they go off and, you know, maybe aren't home to take care of some of this business, I don't think it's a bad idea. I guess, I know Mr. Hegarty's in the room, I don't know if you have an opinion from kind of the town clerk perspective, I just, I don't see a downside to offering this.
I don't offer an opinion, but I do want to correct something. Under the Motor Voter Act. Is this on? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, under the Motor Voter Act, anybody who applies for a driver's license for their learner's permit is automatically pre-registered to vote, all right? So, when they turn 18, the system kicks it out, we mail them a letter, it's automatic. So, we've run several order registration drives at the high school, and virtually everyone has done, so in terms of increasing eligibility to vote, this will have no effect on it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Motion to support Article 34 in the warrant in front of us to reduce the local voting age from 18 to 17. Second?
I seconded, yeah.
All in favor? Okay, so that is a 4-1 vote, in favor, in support. Excuse me? Okay, all, well, no, you maybe, I guess you could have abstained, so all not in favor. Okay, so 4-1. Okay.
Sorry, James.
The next two are Peters, Parkerville Road Driver Feedback Signs, and they're both related, one puts them up and one funds them. Okay? Go ahead, Lisa.
I'd just like to make a comment on this one. So, I've heard a lot of feedback from a lot of citizens on this as well. I think we're well aware, since I've sat on the board, anyway, that there are concerns on a lot of roads in town, Pine Hill, Oak Hill, Oregon, Woodland, Deerfoot, Flag, I think the list goes on, and some of the things I'm hearing from citizens are that this section of Parkerville already has speed humps, and we just lowered the speed limit, and that we need to take a look at some of these other problem roads, and I think we've heard from residents, Chelsea and I did, at office hours, that the signs don't work. And this was from a resident on Pine Hill whose stone wall keeps getting repeatedly hit. So, I don't support this at this time, I think we have a bigger problem, and I don't know that this is the solution on one stretch of the road, where we have a lot of schools in this town as well, and a lot of, we have a lot of intersecting roads to other towns, you know, we're cut-throughs, and again, I think it's a bigger global issue, so, thank you.
Anybody else on those two?
Quick comment, yeah, I think this is, to me, sort of operational management by legislation here, which I think often leads to pretty inefficient allocation of resources, as Lisa suggests, so I think there, again, is a global problem that we need to figure out better ways to deal with. I think the signs are, you know, in some ways effective, but my sense is that people who are inclined to speed substantially tend to be less affected by the signs, and those are the people who are most dangerous, I think, so I don't think that's where the most effective mediation is on this process, so I can't support this.
And to your point, the whole change in the speed limit came out of a process where, you know, we opted into a certain legislative scheme, right, that gave us the flexibility to do this, and it was just some, it was an example of the select board listening to a resident concern about a particular area, did it take a long time to do it? Yes, but it's an example of kind of the system working, so if someone wants to ask the select board to consider installing driver feedback signs on this side of the road, the proper process is just to come to the meetings and kind of lobby for your position and do so effectively, but going this route of saying, well, I don't like your response, I'm just going to have a citizen's petition, is a less effective way of dealing with it. So, I don't support either article.
Chelsea?
Same.
Same for me, this does not belong at town meeting, this is a real waste of town meeting time to have something like this, that's totally advisory, a little, you know, pick at one sign, so we're going to do this every time somebody wants to sign and have an article, so we should discourage this. Okay, so, make a motion to support Articles 36 and 37 as written in the warrant in front of us.
As currently numbered in the warrant, which may change.
As currently numbered with warrant in front of us, 36 and 37.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, so it's 5 on those two. Okay. The next two are regional dispatch, so let's take those one at a time, because they are different. Okay, so, in the case of the article that Bonnie is sponsoring, she's asking the select board to withdraw from the IMA that we signed a couple weeks ago before June 1st. Right? Okay. I think we've talked about this quite a bit, anything else anybody want to say before we go on this one? Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion to support Article 38, regional dispatch withdrawal as written in the warrant that is in front of us right now.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? All opposed? So, unanimous, too? Okay. All right, the next one is the one that Kyle is going to sponsor in Heath. So, that one is basically, if I remember right, it says, don't do this, don't move it out of Southborough, right? Like ever.
Right, yep.
All right, any further discussion on this one? Okay, so I'll make a motion to support Article 39, which is Kyle's defense and Heath Wittes's sponsor article to keep the regional, or keep dispatch local.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Unanimous? You know, you're looking at us, how you know how we're voting.
I already know.
Oh, okay. All right, okay.
You're telling me.
Okay. The next one is Ms. Fiori's article to change the appointing authorities for the Public Works Planning Board. I think we discussed that one quite a bit, so, ready to vote on that one, so, make a motion to support Article 40, the Public Works Planning Board Appointment Process.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? One, all opposed? Okay, so, that was not unanimous, one, four opposed, one in favor. Okay. The next two are Heidi Davis's articles that deal with the small cell policy and the radio frequency radiation. We haven't discussed it, she didn't come, I don't know much about this. Do we want to vote tonight, we want to wait on these two?
Wait until town meeting.
All right, so we're going to wait on those two, see what she's got to say at town meeting. Okay. All right, so I think we've done what we can do as far as town meeting votes, right? Okay, other than Hawkinson, we may do that one this week, and we're going to still wait on the scenic roads for town meeting? Okay, so we agreed to last time. Okay, now, let's talk about, you're going to do, you're going to give us a list of motions at some point, right? Who's making motions, etc.?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll do that, you don't have to worry about that.
Now that you, now the warrant is done, yes.
One thing at a time. Okay, now, let's talk about presentations, reports, what, where are the articles that we need to stand up and say something other than make a motion? Okay, so let's start at the top, it's not 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Budget, we'll see what happens, we'll make the motion and entertain the questions as they come up, right? And the report. If I actually start doing a oral report, either doing a written report, so they're not going to say anything about the budget either orally, there's no reports this time, nobody's doing any.
MTC actually talked about doing a report at their meeting, so I don't know what they're going to do, might check with them.
I thought that last night was decided they weren't going to do it, they were going to be allowed to do a written report and not a oral report.
Okay, I don't know.
I think, if Paul's still listening, he'll correct me if I'm wrong. Okay. And Jason Malinowski asked who's going to do the motion for the Capitol articles, and I said, don't know, we'll talk about it tonight, but I would think we'd want you to do it. So, anybody here disagree with that? Jason doing the actual motion for the Capitol articles? Okay. All right. Break Nick Hill. So, who's going to be the point person when questions start getting asked about that one? I imagine Carl Guyer is going to stand up and have a few things to say.
I would suggest Mr. Stivers, wasn't this one of your goals, Sam?
Well.
I was thinking about it, yeah, I'm happy to do it.
Okay, all right.
And I have talked with Carl at some length about it, so I'm ready.
Okay.
Thank you, Lisa, for volunteering me.
Okay, so 12 and 13 obviously need a presentation. I was going to volunteer to do that one, as the only current select board member that wasn't on the select board last year. Well, you know, I think it makes sense, you know, as far as the right person. Andrew, but I don't want to steal, you know, if you.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
And then I was going to ask Marguerite, Marguerite knows this, we talked about this like, Marguerite to come up, too, and do a quick presentation on the actual, she gets to show the pretty picture, as far as what we're doing, and end it on, hopefully, a high note, as far as the presentation goes. He's asked us to keep the presentations down, he wanted it to be five minutes, I said seven, so it's going to have to be, you know, pretty compact and succinct to meet the seven minute, including her piece of it, so we'll have to practice to get it down, is that okay? Okay, but I want everybody to see it, everybody have a chance to weigh in on the actual presentation, so I, he wants them by the 17th, so I'm planning on having that piece done by the end of the weekend, okay? All right. Okay, moving on. So, someone from the high school is going to do Algonquin, that's not us to do, they'll do that, let's see, talking about that, Hawkinson IMA. So, the proposal last night at the pre-town meeting was for John Butler and I to do that one. I would introduce it, and then he would be on the stage, too, to basically answer all the questions like which roads, etc., he knows the stuff inside and out. And I would much prefer it to be that than me answer questions and not have an answer, and have to turn around and go, what's the answer to that one? I think I know it, but he knows it perfectly. So, I'd much rather it be a shared presentation with me introducing it, how we got here, what the deal looks like, and then he getting into some of the weeds. He said, I'm not doing that in five minutes, so it's going to be a longer presentation, he really wants the town to understand this in depth. So, this may be a little bit longer than the desired five minutes to truly get it out there and make sure all the details are covered.
Just one question, will we be able to see the presentation?
Yes, yeah, I think you'll have this all by the end of the weekend, he's working on it, so.
That makes sense to me.
Okay, all right. All right, so, let's see, what else do we need to do? So, Annie will do theirs, they'll do their presentation. So, Chelsea, I assume you, you're not going to do a presentation, these are citizens' petition articles as far as regional dispatch, you're just going to have to be ready to
I'm ready.
respond, right? So, I imagine you're going to.
I'm ready.
And I would think that you'd want to go on the stage with, you know, and stand there and basically answer the questions.
And the chief.
Will come up with you.
And he's also a resident, so.
Will you also have, like, a presentation or slides?
How does she do that when it's a citizens petition article? So, she's not.
Yeah, I don't know if I.
Unless you're the opposition.
I don't know.
To the article, the other side.
I mean, I can go through my whole dissertation on, I don't know.
Just throwing it out there.
I don't know.
I guess I'll have to talk to the moderator.
Yeah, so why don't you, you guys decide what you guys to do, but I think standing on the stage, not going to the microphone on the floor, but standing up there.
Yeah.
The whole time that those two are being discussed would be more appropriate.
Yeah.
So, you really are there, you know, up there showing, you know, how much you know about this, you know, how long you've been doing this, and how you've got a total command of the project.
Okay.
Right? Anybody disagree with that as far as?
No.
Okay.
Anybody else want to do it?
No.
Just checking, okay?
Please, please. No, I'm glad, Sam, Chelsea's got this one covered.
Yep, yep, yep. Okay.
Article 28, that's the tree fund.
You think we got to do a presentation on that one?
I would hope not, but.
I wouldn't think so.
Okay.
I can speak to it if needed.
All right, so you just be ready to talk about it.
This was, there was also an article about this recently, was it the Fall Town Meeting? Or, it's a continuation of the same thing.
No, we didn't have the tree.
The tree fund wasn't there.
Didn't get to the fund.
The other two were.
Right.
So, remind me, at the May town meeting last year, did we actually end up voting on scenic roads and it went down? I know we postponed trees, we postponed them both, because they actually made a presentation up there on scenic roads, Don Morris was up there, talked.
They did, yeah.
So, we just didn't vote on it? They talked about it, we didn't vote?
Is this one where we didn't?
That's true? So, no vote, right? Okay. All right, so, neither one of these have ever been, well, okay, then at the Fall Town Meeting, trees went down, right? Trees, and then they withdrew or indefinitely postponed. Okay, I just want to make sure, all right, but that's up to them, as far as how they do that.
And Kathy, I'm just trying to remember from our last votes where, I believe at one of our prior meetings, select board voted to approve, support the first tree article, right? But did we defer and say, vote at town meeting for scenic roads or try to remember, did we vote?
Yes, that's exactly what we, we approved. It's 5-0 to support trees, right? And then the vote looked like it was going to be split for scenic roads. We just agreed to wait to town meeting and see what.
Why? I mean, we've talked about it now for like a year.
Well, we can, or we can do it. We can do it. Okay.
Do you want me to make a motion then?
Go ahead.
I move that the select board support at town meeting the scenic, scenic roads article.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? So two, all opposed? So there's our split vote, two, three.
All right, Sam, you win on that.
I feel uncomfortable.
So I don't know anything else we need to do as far as the warrant goes tonight.
I think that's it for tonight.
Okay. All right, anybody else have anything as far as the warrant itself? It goes to the printer tomorrow. Okay. Okay, um.
Sorry.
Who said sorry?
Page 61. School, it's, it, I don't know if it's relevant or not. Two, school committee, Southborough School Committee should be three years, not two. They're in line from the bottom.
That's Mr. Hecary. So what, what should it be?
It should be three years for the two Southborough School Committee seats, right?
Yeah, the one year is right, three, so she's right.
Okay.
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 All right, anything else as far as the warrant itself?
Is ACABIT one, ACABIT, ACABIT's two years or three years, Jim? Okay. It's a four-year term? Okay.
Madam Chair, can I one point on the order of the articles?
Yes, you can make a point, David.
Remember, we had two, I had two articles. One is to cease work and the other one is to investigate. I think the cease work makes more sense coming first. They're now reversed, so can we move that? Can we make the cease work first? It's logically.
Yeah. Is that okay to everybody? Okay, that's fine. We'll, we'll flip them.
I also have a comment in, on my comp, whatever that.
You've got what?
Whatever you.
Public comment.
Okay, we're not ready for public comment quite yet, okay? Got to hang in there a little bit longer. Okay, last thing is we need to decide tonight whether we want to submit requests for earmarks to Kate. So Ms. DeMaris sent us a very good email today with several good selections, so she's here tonight. So I think we just need to list them. And what do we do? Do we just literally give them a list? What do we, what does she want, what form does she want this in?
So, so just to, just kind of put this in a framework. All of the, all of the state reps, you know, legislators and that, you know, do this every year for their communities. They get a list of items, so you can imagine the list of earmarks. They go in for some level of consideration. It's really a low percentage of chance that some of these will be funded. I think the easier that they are, the more, you know, the easier to explain items, you know, might be easier. We can always give a list to the representative and, and, and see if there's something that fits. You know, because again, it may be, well, we've got a fire item we think is the most important thing. There's really no place to put that, but there may be something to do in environmental or planning, you know, some other type of, of opportunity. So I, I think it makes sense to give them a list that they can pick from. And again, it's not something simply for the earmark, but if opportunities arise for either grants or funding and things like that, they've got, you know, they've got, you know, a list of some items that they can pick from.
Well, you know, if you don't ask, you don't get it, right? Um, so there's no downside to this. And as Chelsea knows, when Jim McGovern was here, he kept saying the state's awash in money. That was his phrase, "Ask for things." So I, I still think we put together a pretty good list.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yep.
Which is to definitely consider maybe asking for an earmark to help offset the cost of the Breakneck Hill remediation. Because I think in terms of an item that seems more, one that has a effect not just beyond Southborough, this is one where, you know, it's by a water source, which is going into a public water supply reservoir. That's one that kind of, to me, has some more, you know, appeal. And also, um, the town, I believe, self-reported, and that's why we're in this administrative.
Not quite, but close.
Mr. Garm might disagree with that statement, but whatever.
The town took a proactive role in, or at least in my recent, in the last couple of years has. And there's a significant cost to the Southborough taxpayer because of this, and we could use a little help.
But it's easy to understand.
It's eas, that's another, yeah, it's easy to understand.
Okay, so there's one.
But that's a lot bigger than the normal earmark, though.
Yeah, I think, you know, they're looking for a cap.
She said 75,000.
Seventy-five is the cap. I think, you know, forty to, forty to sixty is kind of the sweet spot, but.
Well, let's, let's do a few at seventy-five.
I'm not saying the whole thing. I just get some money to help offset the cost.
Yeah, I agree. Every, every little bit helps. Okay, so we're going to do, let's say 75K for, for that one, okay? Lisa?
Thanks. I'd like to put money in to upgrade the equipment for the senior center. I think we heard from Andrew, the owl was not the greatest. So I think where we're already retrofitting the public safety building, it might make sense. And again, it creates additional opportunities for the citizens to be able to participate in the meetings. So it just gives another meeting space.
Okay.
And I have one more. Money's for a memory dementia or Alzheimer outreach for the senior center. That's become a really big deal with mental health these days. And if there's any way to set money aside, earmark money for outreach or programs or a cafe, I think it makes a lot of sense. It benefits a lot of members of our community.
So money for outreach, so keep going.
Outreach or potentially programs to help families. I think, again, it would be up to the senior center to, to really decide what the best use of that is, but I, I would just like to have something earmarked for memory.
For help with dementia.
Memory, dementia, Alzheimer's, yeah. They all kind of tie in together.
Okay. Chelsea?
So I had on my list trees. And then the other one is.
Removal, replanted?
No, new, new, new trees, tree replacement.
Planting fund, yeah.
Okay.
And then the other one is.
Can I make a suggestion that maybe you take a look at the, I forget what it was called, the study? The, you know, the, the, the plan that you've got to put together?
Yeah.
That might be better to take a look because it's like.
Because it's not an ongoing thing. Like, it's like a.
It's kind of a one time, it's.
Okay.
Okay.
So it would be inventory and/or study.
Fund, tree, inventory, or study.
Yeah.
And assessment maybe put in there too.
Okay, assessment.
What was he?
Assessment.
Forty?
Uh, forty.
You want forty for that?
Mm-hmm, I do. The other one is board of health related. And we have discovered a problem where we have, we during COVID did not get reimbursed for all of our vaccines that we gave. And this Commonwealth Med has essentially told us, "You're out of luck." So we do not have enough funding in our revolving account. So this is something that I'm working, working on, but might as well ask for it if we can get replenished for the vaccine that we administered that we did not get paid for. And I can, I can do a little write-up on the details around that.
How much do you think that?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay. Lisa, how much for the outreach for the Alzheimer's memory issues?
Again, it's hard to put a number. Say 25,000 to 40,000?
Let's say 40.
Okay.
Same high here. Okay, so, okay, Chelsea, anything else? Okay. So you did yours, Andrew? You did yours, Sam?
Nope.
I just had one big one.
Okay, go ahead. Oh, you had the big one, okay. Sam?
I've had trouble paring down my list, but, but.
I knew this was coming.
That's okay. I'll do it.
You know, when Sam was on advisory, he would come in, we'd start the year, and we, he'd have like 150 things on that list. And they all look great, but, you know, it's hard to get 150 things done in a year.
That's right. I'm accustomed to dealing with disappointment.
Yep.
I've had a lot of practice. I looked at some of the budget stuff. Where did we wind up on the UTV?
We're funding it.
ARPA.
ARPA.
ARPA, well, but maybe ask for that. I mean, that to me is a simple one to understand and you can, you know, wave your arms about emergencies in the deep woods and that kind of stuff.
It's 40 exactly?
Forty thousand, I think, was roughly, yeah.
All right.
The chief, the chief had also mentioned something about their cardiac monitor defibrillator on the Capitol list too. At 75,000. So that's something.
That's, that's an interesting one. And then we had 20K for fire PPE.
So put it on there.
That, again, is easy to understand.
Okay, 25K for the fire.
Twenty, twentyK was in, was in the Capitol thing there, I think. And so those are, you know, budget items. And then, you know, I'm, it'd be great if we could find some ADA money for, again, catching up on our facilities upgrades. And so, I mean, I, I put 50 grand down there, just a round number. So those, those were the high priority ones on my list. And if we got more opportunity, I got more ideas, but that's.
I'm sure you just.
It wasn't on your list.
That, that actually was there. No, no, 20K for a 21E.
There you go. Actually, that's a good one to put on there. Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Okay, so I think, all right.
That's it, yeah.
What was it 21E for?
21E. National Grid.
Okay.
Hey, Mark, you said you were going to actually ask National Grid about that. Is anything happening there?
About?
About getting access to the property and doing a 21E.
No, I can follow up with them on that.
Okay.
Yep.
Or I thought it was just like ideas.
Well, yeah, talking, but, but you, you could do an assessment if they give you access to the property, in theory, so.
Okay, so Dorian will like this one, I think. So I would like to ask for 75K for affordable housing to put into our Affordable House Trust Fund.
I think that's great, but is that, I mean, my sense is these things are easier to sell if they're very specific. If we got a project to say, which, again, it might be a particular project here, but.
Well, we, okay, I don't have a particular project at the moment.
Yeah, okay. Maybe talk about, we've got a pending project that.
All right.
A couple.
Yeah, yeah, two, two, two pending projects.
Two pending projects. What, Dorian?
You got to come up with his mic.
You have the study on 21 Highland Street to consider. You've got the EMC Dell property and you've got the Five Quarterville.
All right, so we'll say pending.
That's a great one, Kathy.
Okay, pending. Okay, pending. Okay, so that's us. Debbie, you want to come up and add to this?
So Debbie, DeMaris, 58 Black Road. So I didn't have the opportunity to present this to the planning board, so this is really my thinking and thanks for the opportunity to give you a couple of ideas. So when, when I first took a look at that opportunity, I was thinking with planning board in mind, but as I said, I don't, I didn't have the opportunity to speak with them. But I was thinking about achieving some of our goals. There's a couple of planning, actually, goals of the master plan, two of them. One is enhancing connectivity within the town to improve travel and also establishing strategies for conservation and reduction in the carbon footprint. So I was thinking about, because these are non-operational, one time, I was thinking consulting. So I came up with consulting to help with getting the town ready for like electrification, voluntary building codes, electrified parking spots, which is part of an electrification plan. That electrification plan can also be part of a climate action plan, which we don't have. We have many components of it. We've got vegetative management plans and we've got other pieces of it, but as a town, we haven't put together a climate action plan.
Okay, so you want money to support the electrification plan that's in the master plan?
Well, I, it, it can be, it can be separate. You know, as, we're a green community and, you know, as we think about, for example, implementing the MBTA communities, we're thinking about having housing stock that's not near the MBTA and what circulation might look like. We might have buses to get people to the MBTA. Would those be electrified buses? So this was really, would be thinking about meeting state mandates, not just on MBTA, but also on, you know, our carbon footprint and, and stuff like that.
But I think if you just say to support electrification plan, including charging stations, da-da-da, da-da-da, that, that's really understandable. And remember, the Infrastructure Act includes a lot of money for this stuff, and that still has not all been disseminated. So this might be a pretty good one.
Okay.
Okay, you agree?
Yeah.
Okay, so how much money?
Just for that?
Yeah.
Well, I mean collectively, I, I have four bullets that I think would max, you know, at the 75, but I was thinking about 20, 25 for, for each of my.
Okay, so 25?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, next.
And then do you have climate action in there?
No, the only thing I'll put down so far was what you said, because you had a mouthful there, was the electrification plan, so now.
Yeah, so in, in climate action plan, there's a lot of resources to help with that as well, to help us meet the state mandate for becoming carbon neutral in 2050. Again, Southborough's doing a lot of things, but we don't actually have them documented. And we know that citizens are eager to know how are we, how are we doing, what are we doing? And also, it would be good to collectively put together that plan. So I would say, if you were to put that forward, I would also put that in at 20.
Okay, so funds to meet the state plan to become.
It's a zero, zero.
Carbon neutral?
I think it's zero carbon neutral by 2050. There, there's a 2030 goal and there's others. And again, we might, we might be there. I know it for master plan. We, you know, included some information, but, you know, there's other, there's other things I think that can, can be done.
Okay, so I've got that as a second one from, okay, and how much you want for that one?
Twenty for that one.
Okay, 20?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
The next one's related to trees that you were talking about. So tree inventory is actually part of a larger picture, I guess, of what does the, how does Southborough think about trees? So we are a green community and we're also a Tree City USA. And the Christina Bezanson, who came to speak to us, who's a, teaches urban forest management at UMass, had said, you know, that she, she recommended that that is really a place to start. What towns do is they create their first urban forest management plan and they do it each decade when they put together their master plan. So they do it at the same time. And that is really a little bit of a how-to guide. How do we feel about trees? What, which ones do we trim versus take down? And also incorporates the, the planting, whether we do it, you know, inch for inch or two to one and what species, so we get a little bit into the tree inventory. And so that's a big effort. It sounds like Chelsea, you know, looking at it for some of the funding. It's a, it's a really giant effort to, to map and I, I don't know if it requires, for example, an arborist. That's, that's a lot of money.
So Chelsea's earmark was 40K for the, the, basically the inventory, the study, et cetera.
What was this study?
Like where to put new trees.
Okay, so, so this would, so this is, I think, sort of the, the umbrella to that. It's what, what do we want our community to look like? You know, we know that trees increase the values of our homes and our properties. Where do we want them? We have a lot of situations like, kind of, parking deserts where there's not a tree. You know, so as like new properties come in, you know, maybe planning board's taking care of that stuff. But we, you know, as we might be adding parking, let's say for MBTA or for a bus to take people to MBTA, we want to make sure that these ideas are incorporated into that. So the urban forest management plan, I would say is at about $50,000. It, it's equivalent in work, from what I understand, almost, to a master plan. Put the first one together, we know that the master plan was about 100K over the last couple of cycles and this is, this is anticipated to be pretty big.
So it's a good suggestion, but do we want to ask for trees twice?
Right.
Yeah, I don't think so, yeah.
I mean, I don't want to glaze over here either.
How much did you put in though?
Forty. Forty, so we could raise the amount and put the urban.
Deb, do you think in the short term, we could address some of these things? Look for a grant or something in the future and address some of these things through policy? I know, you know, we've talked about tree policies and the, and the tree bylaw and, and rules and regs. I mean, do you think some of these things, it seems to be a little bit of overlap?
Yeah.
So, again, it's just a question. I mean, I think, again, maybe we could pursue a grant somewhere to cover this versus having two tree articles within the earmarks.
So you've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, so far with Debbie's two. That's, that's quite a few.
That's quite a few. I guess my, my reaction, Debbie, is that I think the vehicle electrification plan or whatever is something that's tangible and people.
Yeah, I love that one.
I think the others are, for me at least, too high-level, broad. And I guess I would not be motivated to fund those if I thought that, you know, there was limited funding out there, frankly. And the MBTA communities, I'm not sure where I stand on that one, so I'm not looking for a lot of support necessarily to.
We're going to have a meeting, everybody's.
Yep.
In April to talk about the pros and cons, um, we've already allocated money for that anyway, you know, with ARPA money as far as, um, letting planning board hire a consultant to help out.
But the electrification one, I think, is, is something that people can understand, and it contributes to some of these other things as well, so.
Yeah, I like that one too, yeah, that would be great.
And I'm also, though, interested in, in, I'd be interested to know where the planning board stands on these priorities, because as you say, you haven't discussed it with them, and I'd like to support them, but I can't believe they would be not in favor of the electrification one, so.
So six of us put together ten, I think that's a pretty good list, right? Okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
Vanessa, it wants to say something? No? I thought you were raising your hand, okay, sorry. Bonnie, go ahead.
Route eighty-five and Mount Vickery Road, is that part of a?
Sorry, Bonnie.
Route eighty-five and Mount Vickery Road, is that part of a road project?
I would think it's part of the Courtville Road project.
Road project, yeah.
I know they're going to put a pedestrian walk with a flashing light there across Mount Vickery Road.
It's twenty-five percent design, so I think we're nowhere near that much detail at this point.
I just didn't know if we could do it.
Yeah, so one of the first things the new DPW superintendent is going to have, put in his lap, is that project, um, so.
It's just, I just see a lot of kids going down that road now.
Yeah, and I stop all the time, Bonnie, and people don't, they just keep going, and the kids, excuse me, just sit there on their bikes, so that's up, that would be a great thing to consider.
And the other thing, I would check with John Parent about the ADA list as far as a priority that he may know that we don't know.
Okay, so be specific. Okay, um, so.
There's a million dollars.
You're gonna have a busy day tomorrow.
Right, just later, good.
So I'll put that all together in a coherent letter.
All right.
Tomorrow, and I'll just send a copy out to the board for that.
Okay. All right, so, um, I think that's it, other than public comment. All right, what time? Uh, it's late. Okay, public comment, Mr. Perry. Three minutes.
Very brief, David Perry, twenty-three Main Street. I just wanted to respond, last night there was a meeting where an erroneous statement was made, which needs correcting. It all relates to these claims which keep floating around town about the St. Mark's Road project somehow or other solving flooding at the library. And they're all just, they're all fictitious, I checked on to this today, trying to get to the facts. Last night, a couple of you were there, the statement was made by a trustee of the library that someone had witnessed recently a, a stream dug, a dug, an excavator finding an underground stream, putting it into a pipe and putting the pipe into eighty-five. And he, and a mention was made to the library director, I called the library director, Ryan, and I asked him, Ryan, is there any truth to this? And he said, quite to the contrary, he said, back in two thousand eighteen, seventeen or eighteen, that's like six years ago, as part of the Main Street project, he witnessed the contractor for the Main Street project digging up outside the side door of the library near the tree there, and he discovered a lot of water underground and put it in a pipe, put it across eighty-five. So that's where it all comes from. I asked him, did, have you seen anything? Any underground stream which had been dug up by the contractor last year or the year before on the, on the St. Mark's Road project? He said, no, absolutely not, absolutely not. I also asked John Parent about this, he says it's all a myth. I also asked the engineer from Viness Hangen, he says it's a myth. So all this, and, all this stuff floating around town that somehow or other this St. Mark's Road project is going to solve flooding at the library is simply a myth, it's not true, it's not factual. There's nothing in the St. Mark's Road project which has any impact on the flooding at the library whatsoever. I just wanted to make that clear, it's factual, I've got statements from these three individuals about it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Is he over? Hi, Paul.
Hey there, how are you?
We're fine.
Honestly, I, I've just been trying to get, how well do you hear me right now?
Well.
Yeah, I've been trying to, to get the, uh, the, the attention of the folks that aren't sitting at the front table, not their attention. I'm trying to get the attention of somebody who, who can make sure the folks that are not sitting at the front table either hold a microphone to their, to their mouth, or sit right, or stand right next to it, because nobody who's not at the front table is able to be heard out here in Zoom land. And, um, it may be that, we've already had the last speaker in that circumstance, in which case, fine. But if they're any more after me, um, if we just please make sure that all the mics are on and they are being, and they're, they're doing what they're supposed to do.
Okay, Terry's monitoring the mics, though, so they should, people, most people came up to the table or to the, um, podium, okay.
No, I'm saying people sitting right at the table or standing right, just now, David Perry.
Yeah.
Couldn't hear him. Debbie DeMouria before him, couldn't hear her. You know, um, and, and, and the, the audio of you all up at the front is fine, so it's not my setup at home.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Paul, good night. I know, you said five hours, so it's, it's four and a half now. Okay. All right, so, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.